With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable health care can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner called L. Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 census. Together and fearless we come.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epccounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Morning.
Good morning. Commissioner Robinson, you're on the call?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner, how are you today?
I'm well.
And I see Commissioner Leon has the belt, so we got, I think we have everybody now?
Yes, sir, and we are up, we're ready to start.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Thursday, June 18, 2020. Commissioners' Court is meeting in special open session. This morning, we're joined by ASL interpreter Selena Salom and Dario Garcia. Would you all please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Caesar?
Yes, sir. Item number three is public comment. At this time, we have, nobody signed up for public comment, so we'll continue on to our regular agenda. Item number four, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the impact of COVID-19 on the operations, equipment, and services provided by El Paso County Constables and deputies.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. The reason I put this on the agenda, as you know, I've been talking with the constables over, period over really the last seven and a half years. Something that continuously comes up, and especially come up during this time, is, I consider it a matter of equity, where a lot of the constable's offices are working in relation to, especially right now with the COVID-19 issues, that are working and are generating comp time. And reviewing with them and talking to them, it's felt that they feel that they should be also generating overtime. Now, they can control it to a certain extent, and also in having my meetings with them and talking to them, sometimes they will assist, whether it's the El Paso Police Department or the Sheriff's Department, with some crowd control in light of these latest protests. I just want to make sure that they are equipped with equipment that they need to protect themselves. And the only two items of equipment I can think of is, are the shields and helmets. Now, I understand that not all the offices participate in this, so it's limited possibly to two or three constable's offices, but I just want to assure myself and them that they will have the protection that they need. Now, in talking to the sheriff, he has let me know that he's willing to, and he's done it in the past, is share equipment with him as it comes up. So, I just want to bring this up for discussion. I understand there may be one or two of the constables online to explain more in detail of what those needs are.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon.
Miguel, do we have anybody online?
Commissioners, this is Alexis with IT. We have Constable Ugarte on the line. Constable, if you could please unmute yourself on your phone.
Good morning, Commissioners. County Judge, this is Oscar Ugarte, Constable, Precinct 1, and I want to thank Commissioner Leon for putting this item on the agenda. Also wanted to include some other stuff and just give you a little brief presentation of what we've been doing. Since COVID-19 affected our county, my office has continued to work on the front lines assisting our community. Once the stay home, work, safe orders were put in place, in our county, we have been conducting business checks to make sure businesses don't get burglarized or vandalized while they remain closed. We also assisted with security and traffic control at the local food banks and the COVID-19 mobile testing sites. When we're out there conducting traffic control, security at these sites, it's for most of the day or an entire shift in inclement weather. It does take a toll on our staff, so I would like to have the proper equipment and tools for my deputies to feel safe and work comfortably when they're out there. I know the county's really good at taking care of their most important asset, which is our employees, and I would like for your support in approving funding from the CARES Act to purchase some equipment. Some of the equipment, you know, being out there directly in the field, what I see is, we need some commercial-grade, heavy-duty pop-up shades. We had some pop-up shades donated from local businesses here in our community, but they were not commercial-grade, and actually in one day, we had a small gust and we lost three of those shades that were donated. And also some traffic cones, you know, right now, when we're doing the mobile testing sites, you know, the National Guard does come fully equipped, and we've been using from some traffic cones that they bring with them, but I would like to have our own traffic cones, so we don't have to depend on another agency when we're taking care of county needs. Another necessity, I think, would be good is a utility trailer to transport this equipment. You know, currently, when we transport our equipment, we're transporting equipment in the backseats of our units, you know, our units are equipped with prisoner transport equipment, so it's very limited space, you know. Being a small agency, we wear many different hats in one day. In the morning shift, we're loading equipment to provide security at a mobile testing site. By midday, we're taking off the equipment because we need to go transport a deputy. So I think it would make more sense to have this utility trailer just to store the equipment there, and when we need it, pull it. It can also serve as a dual-purpose and have it as a mobile field office to keep our officers cool when they're taking a break, when they're out there in the field doing these testing sites. And we don't know what's coming with this COVID-19, you know, here in Texas, the cases keep increasing every day. CDC is saying that they expect another wave coming when colder weather gets here, so I want my office properly equipped to serve our community for the coming months. And like Commissioner Leon mentioned, you know, my staff has been in the front lines since this COVID-19 started. When they're out there in the field, working with other counterpart law enforcements, and you know, they start small talk within the officers, and other departments mention that they are getting compensated with overtime, and my officers only get compensated with comp time. So at the end of the shift, you know, they go and serve with pride, but then they come to me and ask, how come we can't get compensated with overtime? So what I told them, you know, I don't think it's right, I'm going to work for you and try to get you properly compensated, so here I am before Commissioners' Court and you County Judge to support us and work with us to get us the proper compensation. And that's all I have.
Well, just a quick comment, Mr. Leon, you know, I've been very fortunate to work with Constable Ugarte and Garcia. I've been able, you know, they've taken me to different sites, to the testing sites, to the food banks, and I can't tell you how people appreciate their presence. As soon as they come in, you could see the relief with everyone, knowing that they could handle the traffic, people cutting in line, people sort of getting upset at each other out there in the hot sun. And then I think what I'm hearing is sort of an inequality of, you know, their county employees, but yet they have different kinds of situations and policies, and they're working without the resources, they're having to do things that are almost as secondary kind of thing to have the things that they need to be successful. But I can only, what I could vouch for is really the reaction from people like Susan Goodell telling me that they are just amazed, and not only they do traffic control, but they interact with the people, their presence is very well-known, they're respected, and so just, I do agree that there shouldn't be any reason why they have to be sort of scavenging or trying to get resources from different places just to be able to do their job properly, or, you know, using a vehicle that's used for transporting prisoners, using that to carry materials and supplies, and it is, I mean, I've been in that vehicle, and it's very limited, and they're having to do a tremendous amount of things just to be able to do their job. So I do thank you for bringing that up. We should never have anybody who's part of our county family under different kinds of situations, and I don't know how that, how it got to that point, but I do know that they consider themselves as county employees, and they have to interact with county employees that have different types of policies and different types of benefits, and I think we should address their concerns very seriously.
Judge, thank you. And really, as compared to the police department and the sheriff's department, the constables have a little more control of their schedule. As I advised them last week, if some of these food giveaways that they have that they assist with, if they for some reason cannot make it, well, it's incumbent on the police department or the sheriff's department to pick up the slack. I went out to the West Side yesterday, and I noticed a food line off of Montana into, I think it was the St. Clement's area, with absolutely no traffic control out there, and yeah, that is the responsibility of the El Paso Police Department, but I understand they're understaffed and they're very busy, so they do make a difference. And possibly, we can look at CARES Act funding to assist them, and I know that in talking to Betsy, that's something we approved last week, and possibly maybe to cut to the chase in this morning's discussion, possibly put together a small committee to actually see where that funding will go to. We don't know how much it's going to be, or we may, I've not been advised of the possible total amount.
Commissioner Leon, so there's been an actual proposal of the amount of money and how it's going to be used, or is that what we're going to be sort of focusing on at this time? Or maybe Betsy, I don't know if you could respond to the question, Betsy, and see where we're at as far as understanding the needs, and then understanding where do we, you know, how do the CARES Act, or how do we do that? Betsy, you want to give us an overview of that?
Yes, sir. The amount that Commissioner Leon is talking about at the moment is funding through the CESF grant, which we just, the court approved us applying for on Monday, and part of our backup for that grant would be using a portion of the funding to supplement the staffing for constables who are doing this kind of work, to create a temporary pool to bring in some additional staffing to assist the constables. So it would be a pool that constables would be able to access if they were doing work related to COVID-19, such as assisting with the food bank or testing, things of that nature. So that is a temporary staffing funding allocation. For the items discussed today, that Constable Ugarte mentioned that they could use and would be available for others to use to help with events and to help with traffic control, that the court could direct us to allocate some of our CARES funds. We don't need an action item because we already have a CARES fund budget set up, but we would just need a consensus from the court to do that, and we would work with the constables' offices to get those supplies.
Betsy, I know that we're sort of, a lot of pressure from the rural mayors as far as providing money, and I know it's going to be difficult, we're looking for the full amount of the, you know, 1 million plus, and I think we're down half of that. If you could educate me a little bit, how did we get to a point where they're under different policies, or they don't get overtime versus, you know, they get comp time, and because one thing is getting money now, but for the long haul, are we doing anything about having more, for them to feel more like they're part of the county employees, that they feel good about what they do, they're under the same premises? Could you direct me a little bit as to what are some of the challenges with doing that? I know budget, obviously, but what are some of the, how do we get to this point where we're sort of compensating different, or there's a little bit of a different treatment from the budget side and also from the employee side?
So, actually, what happens is constables are treated like all other county employees. They are eligible for comp time, the county generally has not budgeted overtime in its history for the majority of county employees. This last, in the last couple cycles of budget, Commissioners' Court did set up a small allocation for emergency overtime for public works employees and other employees during states of emergency. We could use that same pool of funding to authorize some overtime for constables. So it's not, I think what they're comparing themselves to is other law enforcement agencies that do pay overtime, but county, for its non-collective bargaining employees, has never generally paid or budgeted for overtime. And as Commissioner Leon mentioned, one of the challenges is whether or not the schedule can be controlled by the constables or not, and how that cost would be managed. So definitely something we could look into. I've asked HR previously and budget to look into previously, what would it cost us to take what we currently give in comp time and change it into an overtime budget? I know that Melissa continues to assess that. The, in some areas, we do accumulate quite a bit of comp time, but the downside to comp time obviously is loss of productivity, because you have to give the individual the time off for the time they worked over, plus that has to be at time and a half. So, but that's the history, that we just don't pay overtime to any county employees generally, non-collective bargaining.
Thank you, Betsy.
Commissioner Robinson?
Commissioner Robinson, and then Commissioner Stout, please.
Yes, sir. First of all, I support the constables. They are, although they're county employees, although they're not part of the bargaining process as the sheriff's department, but they are law enforcement officers, and they provide a vital support to our community that's necessary. So the role they play, you know, you talk about the, thing about the food bank and things of that nature, but as well as the role they play on a daily basis with, through the JP Courts, to provide the services of issuing warrants and serving warrants, eviction and the other things that they're required to do by charter. Now, I feel that they should be properly compensated and provided the necessary equipment and tools they need to perform their job as far as the regular duty days, regular functions, as well as the additional functions that they provide in support of the police department and the sheriff's department as necessary. You talk about the crowd control, things of that nature, so they are essential to our safety and security in our community throughout the county, and I say, it should be, we should take care of them as best we can. Now, as far as the overtime, if you say we're going to say put them in a separate category, I think that we should provide some funding necessary for control overtime as necessary. So as opposed to having to come back and say, well, we're going to find money here, find money there, when we go through the budget process, I'm willing to advocate that we set a budget, amount of money in the budget for overtime to make sure, for those as necessary, as well as ensuring that they, let me ask you a question. The trailer that we were talking about, is that people use for all constables, not just one precinct? Is that a yes or no?
That's correct.
Constable Ugarte?
Yes. Yes, if another constable wants to use it, you know, it's county resources, so they can use it, you know.
And how much are we talking about?
The CARES Act funding is, I mean, we do have to use it for purposes related to COVID during the COVID crisis, and then afterwards, the county can use it as it deems appropriate.
Okay. How much are we talking about for the trailer?
For an enclosed trailer with air conditioning, I don't know if Constable Ugarte has priced that, or with heating or cooling type unit? Or with heating or cooling type units. I'm estimating depending, it'll depend on the size of the trailer.
Yeah, I believe, I quoted a trailer because I applied for a grant for the car seats. When I quoted that trailer, it was approximately fifteen thousand for an enclosed trailer. This was about a year ago. I'm sorry, sir?
Is that with air?
Uh, yes.
Fifteen thousand, okay. And how big is the trailer?
I don't have an exact number right now. This is from past numbers last year.
If the court, if the court authorizes us to use and proceed with helping to equip the constables for COVID-19 related, we would work through the purchasing process with the specs to get the equipment they need. And we would have sufficient funding. You wouldn't have to designate an amount today as we have set up a budget.
Okay, and so we're talking about the trailer, we're talking about the traffic cones. Now, one other thing as far as since we talked about, particularly in light of the things that's happened in the nation today with law enforcement, what do, I know that the sheriff's department has some body cams, but what about body cams for our constables?
They got them already.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Eric Rosales, Assistant County Attorney. I'll be covering for the county attorney's office this morning. So the item as posted is supposed to be regarding the impact of COVID-19 on the county constables and deputies. So I think we're going a little bit outside of the scope, talking about anything outside of their their work with COVID-19.
Thank you. Thank you, Erica. Appreciate that. Commissioner Staudt, you want to add some comments?
I want to, I want to say a couple of things. I didn't hear Constable Ugarte talk about shields and helmets and riot gear and equipment, you know, that doesn't really pertain to COVID-19. You know, you can't, you can't conflate what happened with George Floyd and the protests here with the needs that are, that are, that may be coming up with COVID-19. And so I think, I think we need to be very clear that, you know, I feel like we shouldn't even be trying to, you know, purchase equipment like that in the first place. But second of all, I don't think we should be trying to purchase equipment like that with COVID-19 funding. I think we could get, doing that because it has absolutely nothing to do with COVID-19. Second of all, I mean, I, I have, you know, I'm torn here because, you know, I understand that, you know, that the constables, you know, provide an essential and vital support. But all of our employees provide essential and vital support. And 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 I don't want to get into the situation where we are setting one class of employees over another class of employees. The way, the way the law is set up is constables do not have collective bargaining. You know, if that's something that they want to advocate for in the future, then that's their prerogative. But the way things are right now, you know, they, they do not have collective bargaining. And so we need to understand that. And and I don't, I don't feel like we need to be creating different classes of employees that are not, that do not have collective bargaining. I mean, there are law enforcement officers in other departments within the county, like in the DA's office and in the county attorney's office. So then next, are we going to be expanding this to them? Are we going to be talking about doing that? I mean, any county could then, you know, make a charge that we are treating, that we're treating folks unfairly. And so I, I mean, I, I, I think we need to really, really understand that and think about that. You know, yes, they have a specific duty and something that not every other employee at the county does. There are other departments that have specific duties that not everybody in the county does as well. And so I think we need to be able to differentiate and understand that. You know, I also think that, you know, I have heard, of course, you know, from folks out at the food bank, that the help the constables is providing is, you know, is, is something that they need. And it's, and it's also, you know, I've had people call in and ask for more support. So I understand that. However, I also remember in conversations in the past, hearing about, you know, constables having to, that are, that are from one side of the county serving warrants on the other side of the county. And and some of the inefficiencies that, that, that may be caused by that, you know, and the time consumption and things like that. And so I want, I want to, you know, I want to understand that a little bit more. Because, you know, if there's, if there's a manner to, to make sure that, you know, constables are only serving warrants in the areas that they, that they, in their districts, basically, then maybe there's, there's some time savings there. And and we wouldn't have to spend so much on either comp time or overtime if that's what ends up happening today or whenever the decision is made. I also think that, you know, if we're, if we're going to do that, if we're going to do this, then there needs to be close, close monitoring by HR to make sure that, that, that we're not, you know, going overboard. And not to say that they're going to be abusive, but just want to make sure that, that things are, are, you know, that we're not going to be, you know, having to spend large, large amounts of money when we don't have a lot of money to be, to be, you know, extra to be spending. You know, those are some, those are some things that I, that, that I, that I felt that needed to be, that needed to be brought up. So that's, thank you. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Judge. I appreciate it. Just to bring up a few things. Number one, you're right, Commissioner Staudt, insofar as relating equipment to COVID-19. But under any circumstances, I want to make sure that our law enforcement officers are protected. We're not talking about any kind of aggressive material. We want to make sure that they're protected. And I'll go the entire way to make sure that they are safe and fulfilling their duties. And another thing you mentioned, you mentioned the DA and the county attorney's office having investigators. But they're, they do, you may not know this, but they completely different duties. They're not a uniform, they're not out there insofar as assisting with protests and dealing in other law enforcement aspects that constables deal with. Now, their role with the county attorney, district attorney are very vital, very important. And I've got to tell you that you're right, that there was one constable's office serving warrants on the other side of town. This has nothing to do with what I'm talking about. So getting back to, to protecting our, our staff and making sure that there is equity, whether or not they belong to a certain class of individuals protected by collective bargaining, this is not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about being as fair as we can. And as I mentioned earlier, in talking to Betsy and the other constables, they have a certain amount of control over what their deputies get involved in or not involved in. So thank you, Judge. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson, you were going to comment, please?
Yes, sir. I wanted to, the constable, Commissioner Leon and the constable know that I support them within reason. I will assist in making sure that you, the constable get the support they need, both equipment wise and financially as best we can. So I equate the two, the constables, like other law enforcement officers, the police and sheriffs, like soldiers, they have boots on the ground. The other investigators with the DA's office, they're not boots on the ground. They are doing investigations, but they're not boots on the ground every day. So my support is for the constables.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Leon, you want to redirect to see? I think we're trying to get a consensus to see if we would look at what's been proposed?
Yes, thank you, Judge. And I think with your first recommendation, I think that's the way to go. Have Betsy look into it. And if it means setting up a small committee to assist in directing where the funding is going to, it might be a help to Betsy's office. But Betsy, whatever your best thoughts are, do we create a committee or just handle it through your office?
Commissioner, if you'd like to do a committee, but I feel very comfortable that we could work directly with the constables about their supply needs responding to COVID-19. We would be judicious in making sure we're meeting their needs and being very responsible. So, and I would be happy to report back to the court what items we're going to use CARES Act funding to purchase.
I think that's a good idea, Judge.
So we need a consensus for that to happen?
Okay, so my motion is going to be, as Betsy described, assign this duty to her office to come back to the court with a clarification as to where this funding will go.
Thank you. Consensus or a vote?
I think it's a, we need to take appropriate actions. Well, I would think it's a vote.
Okay, I second that.
Well, so, Judge Commissioners Eric Rosales, Assistant County Attorney. So I believe Betsy had mentioned that we, a consensus is enough because there's a CARES Act fund right already dedicated for these purposes. So I don't believe action is needed. Betsy, let me know if.
So it's, it's fine if they want to make a motion for us to work with the constable's office. But we do have a budget. So what I would do is I would report back to Commissioners Court the items that we're purchasing under that budget for constables' use. And so if the motion, that what I understand is Commissioner Leon wants to make a motion for my office to work with the constables on the equipment that would be responsive to, or would be needed to respond to COVID-19 related items. And for me to update the court with what items it is that we're purchasing using CARES Act funds.
Okay.
And then Commissioner Robinson seconded.
Okay, got it.
So I have a question for clarification. So are we, are we talking about protective gear like riot gear? Or are we just talking about pop-up shades, traffic cones and utility trailers?
Yeah, COVID-related is what my understanding is.
Okay, and in the motion, are we, and in the motion, are we also talking about making the, making the change from, from comp time to, to overtime? Or is that not included in this motion?
What I'm understanding, Commissioner, would be. It would be equipment for COVID-related items. As far as overtime to comp time, I would want, I want to bring back information to the court on the cost to do that. And that would not be related to COVID because that would be an ongoing policy change and it would be a general fund impact. So that would be a completely separate item we would need to bring back.
Yeah, and so the, so the item's only posted for COVID-related, right?
Yes, sir. And, and that's what we would act upon. And I would brief the court on what items we were purchasing to support the response for COVID-19 related work for the constables. It, I want to be clear, it would be the types of equipment that Commissioner Ugarte, I'm sorry, Constable Ugarte mentioned. But we'd be working with the other constables as well. So there may be other equipment that would be related to responding and assisting during the COVID-19 crises. But we're not talking about riot gear. We're not talking about overtime. This is equipping them so that they can safely operate in response to COVID-19.
So Erica, do I need to go back and define my, my motion a little clearer?
I don't think, I don't think so, Commissioner. I think it's, at this point, it's the motion to have the county administrator's office work with the constables, right? To identify equipment in relation to, to COVID-19 operations, a response to COVID-19 operations. Does that kind of summarize it? It's just really working between the two offices. So I think right now it's not going to have the most clear definition, but I think that that should be enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I second that. Either myself or Commissioner Robinson second that motion.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Staudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Back to Caesar.
Item number five, receive a presentation from the Economic Development Department and the Loya Center, along with Hunt Institute, to discuss the impacts of COVID-19 on our broadband system and provide staff with direction on next steps.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners Andrea Hetchens with the Economic Development Department. As Caesar mentioned, I'm very pleased to be joined this morning with the team from the Loya Center and the Hunt Institute. They have been working diligently over the last few months. And quite frankly, this work had started prior to COVID-19, which kind of has given us a leg up to be able to move quickly, to be able to provide the court with this presentation this morning. So if we could go to the slides, please? So before I hand things over to Michael Garcia with the, with the Loya Center, I just want to, you know, again, reiterate to the court that the team over at the Loya Center, along with an intern in our office, Ifat Fatima, has been working very, very hard on making sure that there is a really comprehensive background done on broadband here in El Paso County. And they were able to quickly pivot to the impacts of COVID-19, as I had mentioned, because this work was already being conducted. So I'd like to introduce Michael Garcia. He is the director for the Loya Center. And he can introduce his team and the folks that have been working with him on this. So, Michael, are you there?
Good morning, Andrea. I am here. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Garcia. Nice to see you again.
Judge Samaniego? Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Judge Samaniego, Commissioners, guests of the court. Very good morning to you. We are very pleased and honored to be here with our team from the Michaela Center for Innovation and Commerce at UTEP. We've been putting in hundreds of hours here, working with Andrea to begin our investigations of this very compelling and progressive concept of municipal broadband service. It's a very complex topic. It is not without risk. But we surely believe that the key to this is understanding, getting information that helps us to understand that complexity and that will mitigate that risk. Ideally, we could do this all right here in El Paso County. Right here, we've got an army of researchers and graduate students at UTEP that have the knowledge and the capability to do this. And we can keep our funding right here in the county of El Paso. It's a big topic and we have several of our graduate research fellows and our staff from the Michaela Center here to present that to you. It's just the tip of the iceberg. But it does give us the idea of just how important studying the topic deeper is in order to understand it and understand the feasibility of municipal broadband. So without further ado, then, I'm going to hand this over to Ifat Fatima, who has been working with Andrea for several months now, to begin our presentation. Ifat?
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Ifat Fatima.
Hi, good morning everyone. Uh, my name is Ifat Fatima and I am currently an MBA student here at UTEP with a concentration in finance. So we currently live in a digital era where broadband is just as much of a necessity as water and electricity. And because of this necessity, we can see a trend emerging all across the nation where municipalities have started implementing some sort of municipal broadband structure within their own region to help with economic growth. I started my research off by studying FCC maps and comparing them to the maps created by Microsoft as part of their Airband Initiative. And what I quickly came to realize, as you all probably know, that the FCC maps are extremely inaccurate because they use census blocks to capture data. Given our region's unique economic climate and demographics, the FCC maps aren't able to accurately capture the need of broadband in our region. And to be honest, prior to this pandemic, we as grad students didn't understand the magnitude of broadband problem in our county. So without further ado, I would like to hand things off to my colleague Antonio, who has done extensive research um, of our county and compared it to other counties within the nations that have similar demographics to see where we currently stand in terms of various economic and social metrics.
Good morning Judge, uh, county commissioners. My name is Antonio Sosa. Um, I am a graduate student pursuing a master's degree in information technology. So let me ask you for something. Uh, are you guys are able to see the presentation? Cause I'm not able to. There it is. Thank you. Um, so uh, during the last few uh, months, I, I created a profile of El Paso. Uh, the reason for that is that in order to, to plan for the future, we need to understand who we are in the present, right? Uh, next slide please. In order to do that, I took three um, three factors into consideration. GDP, population, and the geographical location of El Paso. Based on these three th- three factors, then I, I took three comparable counties to see where we stand against these counties and in the nation. From there, I took two categories provided by the Census Bureau to see again where, where is that we stand in uh, against these counties and in the nation. Those categories are internet and computer access and levels of education. Lastly, I'll talk a little bit about the industries of El Paso. Next slide please. But where do we stand in terms of GDP and population? El Paso County is the seventh largest GDP in the state of Texas. However, El Paso Metropolitan Statistical Area occupies the 335th largest GDP out of 382 in the nation. El Paso County is the eighth most populated county in Texas and it is the 73rd most populated county in the US. Uh, as you can see, when we talk in a statewide, we are significant in both GDP and population. However, it seems that we fall slightly behind when we talk about GDP nationwide. Uh, based on this information, then I selected these three counties which are similar to El Paso. Hidalgo, uh, Texas, which is also a bordered uh, town, a border community. San Joaquin, California, which is located to the west coast. And Hamilton, which is near to the east coast. Uh, next slide please. As you can see to your left, that's the population of these, of all the counties that I just mentioned, along with the number of households. Um, total employer establishments and the poverty level. I would like just to emphasize in this part that we occupy the second highest uh, poverty level among these counties. Just behind Hidalgo with 30%, we are at 20.5. When we look at the educational level, uh, we do have a good percent, we, we, we perform uh, good in a bachelor's degree or, or higher. However, uh, we are slightly behind in terms of uh, high school graduates or higher. When we look at the computer and internet use, we can see that there is uh, we are uh, the third lowest of these comparable counties in terms of the broadband internet subscription. And uh, we are uh, performing good in the terms of a computer access. Next slide please. To your left, you can see a chart with the, the industries and uh, the number, the percentage of the population that they employ from El Paso and um, and the, at the Texas average. So the, the top five industries that employ people here at El Paso are uh, healthcare, education, retail, hospitality, and government. When we compare it to the Texas average, we uh, the, we perform better than the Texas average in the government, education, and hospitality. However, we underperform in construction, manufacturing, and professional services. Next slide please. This is how our GDP looks like compared with uh, our comparable counties. Uh, as you can see, we follow a very similar trend to San Joaquin and Hidalgo. And Hamilton, i- i- it's, i- i- it does have a significant uh, greater GDP than, than us. Next slide please. When we look at educational and health services, and I'm sorry, uh, you can see the title probably there, but uh, to your right, you can see educational services, healthcare, and social assistance. We were uh, doing um, pretty similar to Hidalgo and San Joaquin. However, we fell behind uh, during uh, 2000 to 2010. And then in 2010, we re- retook the trend to Hidalgo and San Joaquin. Uh, however, we are slightly behind them. Next slide please. I want to mention that uh, compared to these counties which are comparable to us, uh, we, we have a very significant inflow of uh, uh, cash flow in a government and government enterprises. In this case, not even Hamilton has uh, 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 the level that El Paso has. Next slide please. Finally, the information technology. I just want to mention that it was a very interesting uh, finding. From the first uh, 10 years in, from 2000 to 2010, there was almost a hundred percent uh, growth in uh, the information in uh, sector industry, pardon me. And then from 2010 to 2018, there is a, almost a 50%. So uh, we are not performing as the previous decade. So with that being said, I'll pass uh, the mic to the next uh, person. Thank you.
Thank you Antonio.
Thank you.
I'm Adriana Sudimak and I'm currently an MBA student. Next slide please. COVID-19 has brought to light some necessities and areas in our society that we should really focus on. We can start by looking at access to healthcare. Next slide please. You'll see to the right, a comparison of HIPAA scores between El Paso and San Joaquin County in California. Primary care ranges from zero to 25 and dental from zero to 26. Now, the higher the score, the greater the necessity for medical professionals. Although broadband ac- through broadband access, we can optimize appointment time, enhance face-to-face interactions, and consult with experts to deliver fast, high-quality diagnosis and treatment. This will also drive preventative medicine that has proven to lower healthcare costs and raises the quality of life. I'd like to note that tele dentistry is illegal in Texas, but it is worth advocating for. I'd be happy to provide some more information after the presentation. Next slide please. This also makes us consider remote education. We can see on the right, the high impact COVID-19 has had from primary to tertiary education. Institutions and students have had to adapt very quickly. Next slide please. We can see its effect in our school districts. Clint ISD has spent $960,000. Tornejo has spent $140,000 for one year of data. These solutions aren't sustainable and they take away from innovating and improving our children's education. It's also worth noting that for schools to receive funding, they must provide some sort of instruction. And students that don't have access to internet can only fill paper packets as other children have a wide array of resources and learning experience. Next slide please. We can also see an impact in remote working. This has brought not only environmental benefits, but greater access to those that have difficult mobility and disabilities. We can engage in upskilling and reskilling to help our citizens find job opportunities in tech fields where they can work from home as well. You'll see on the right, a telework savings calculator. An important tool for business owners now to see how much they could save by engaging in remote work. This also begs the question, what to do with the extra office space? We can provide solutions for small businesses, entrepreneurs, even address the housing crisis. Next slide please. Through broadband access in our government, we can see a direct impact on population through improved alert systems, electoral information, and safety notices that can prepare people for other events like COVID or something adjacent to it. Other impacts could be seen on government services. We can not only improve quality, but give access to all taxpayers that are contributing for the development of these services. Next slide please. We're going to go on to the next topic on alternatives for the El Paso County broadband expansion and I'll pass it along to Robert.
Hi there, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, if we can.
Thank you. So uh, hi, my name is Robert Hufal. I'm also a graduate research fellow for the Michael Loya Center for Innovation and Commerce and currently getting my uh, MBA with a concentration in management. Um, for some reason, I cannot see the slides, so I will have to pause my screen in order to pull them up on my computer. So for my slides, I will be talking about the alternatives for countywide broadband expansion. And so the, the first example of how a broadband network could be set up would be to make it a government-owned municipal broadband network, also known as a GON. This would be purely public and there are many examples of these in the marketplace. With that comes both successes and failures. The best example of a success would be Chattanooga, Tennessee. There, there seems the model for those looking to pursue a GON. This is so because for them, the stars happened to align and they were able to make it profitable. Um, they were able to do this because they secured a one-time federal grant of $110 million and they also act as a nonprofit. They got liabilities without exposing the city and the taxpayers to much risk. Um, the only problem is that they operated under unique circumstances like I mentioned before. Um, and those are difficult to replicate. Another, uh, an example of a failure would be Provo, Utah. There, they cost taxpayer $60 million and had to sell out to Google. Um, Provo couldn't find a suitable market and they kept draining money from the city. Uh, also, the amount of money they gave to the GON diverted a lot away from their infrastructure needs, which goes into the opportunity cost of the project. Through my research, I have found that overly optimistic assumptions can doom a GON. Also, there have been legal pushbacks from private organizations of the spectrum as well as states. Many GONs have failed because the opportunity cost to GON was in the form of rebuilding critical infrastructure that was deemed necessary at that time. Overall, the uh, direct economic impact of GONs remains to be seen um, due to many other economic development factors in the market. Uh, insufficient business models could lead to starting and operating costs mitigating the overall profit of a GON. This is due to the lack of demand, or this is due to the possibility of a lack of demand and um, not finding the right target market in order for the need of broadband. Um, next slide please. Um, I can't see, are you guys on the public partnership, public-private partnership slide?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Thank you. So another option would be a public-private partnership. Um, the most applicable form of a PPP for the El Paso County would be a balanced public-private approach where the local government acts as an intermediary and a conduit for channeling funds to the private partner. Um, this will main- this will minimize the financial burden taken by the county and pass some of the risk on to the private partners. In Maine and uh, New York, there have been, they have used grant programs such as Connect ME and Connect NY that are designed to spur investment by broadband service providers to these underserved areas. Um, these grants have a pure preference for a public-private partnership, uh, specifically a balanced public-private partnership so that the government may use secure public resources as an incentive for these pub- for these um, private sector firms to share the risk in these uneconomic regions. Um, next slide please. Now we will discuss the cost estimates of this project, which I'll turn it over to Christian. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Christian Diaz. I'm an MBA student as well. And right here, uh, we're presenting the total construction cost estimates for the municipal broadband project. Now, uh, these costs do not include the feasibility study in the business plan, but in order to get a vendor, better understanding of the figures that are presented, uh, there are a few assumptions that we had to take. One of them is that El Paso County currently has no fiber infrastructure in place and that we are using a 25% take rate, which is the percentage of households and businesses that will subscribe to our service. Now, we use four different feasibility studies that were conducted by a company called CTC Technology. The cities studied were Boulder, Colorado, Madison, Wisconsin, Santa Cruz, California, and San Francisco. We took the average of their price per passings for each of the cost components that are listed there. And we multiplied it by El Paso, by El Paso County's passings, which we defined as the number of households and businesses. So further analysis is going to be required to develop a more accurate cost estimate and that'll come with the feasibility study. Now, next, I'd like to pass it on to Enrique, who's going to talk, who's going to talk about funding and legal considerations.
Thank you, Christian. Can everybody see me? Hello, everyone. I'll go ahead and turn off my camera so that way we, we can fully see the slides. Uh, so hello, everyone. My name is Enrique Vasquez. I'm an MBA student uh, at the uh, UTEP with a concentration in finance, working for the Loya Center. Uh, can we go ahead and go to the next slide, please? And then the next slide. Thank you very much. Uh, so we'll go ahead and start uh, my part off with a quick discussion about issuing certificates of obligation as an expedited method of in-house funding for the municipal broadband project. Now, much like municipal bonds, certificates of obligation are backed by tax revenue, fee revenues, or any combination of the two. The key benefit here, however, is that COs can be issued without voter approval uh, unless a referendum is petitioned, which needs a 5% petition to call for one. A perfect example of this is how the city of Mont Belvieu, Texas was able to utilize this source of in-house funding to initiate their broadband project in 2016 and generate revenues by 2018. Uh, next slide please. Alright, so moving on to laws and regulations, what I believe we need to be most prepared for is the potential legal litigation, specifically with regards to the Texas Utilities Code, Section 54, Subsection 1, which states that municipalities cannot obtain a certificate for basic telecommunications service and the like, which may come into question with building a broadband network that can also be used for communications. Next slide please. Alright, and, and once again, the city of Mont Belvieu is a great precedent of how to handle the confusion and settle disputes as it presented valid counterarguments which negate the claims of building a municipally-owned broadband network so long as it is, as it is an internet service provider which does not use telecommunications. Now, much time has passed since 2016 and the question of legal viability might be of concern, but the most recent adaptation of these laws has been by the city of Dayton, Texas, which in mid-March this year was approved to operate its own fiber optic system. And that's only second to Mont Belvieu here in Texas. So there's still headway and capability in this front. And with that, I'll go ahead and pass it on, uh, the next part to David.
Um, good morning to all members of, of the county. My name is David Canisales. I am currently a graduate student at UTEP. I'm pursuing an MBA degree. I'm going to so we can see the slides. Um, next slide please. I'm going to be talking about federal funding for broadband projects. Um, as Christian mentioned earlier, um, funding or a great, a great number of investment, uh, capital investment is required for these projects. However, there are federal programs available to fund these projects that are related to broadband planning, public access, digital literacy, and deployment. Now, keep in mind that no broadband project will be the same. Some broadband projects will be more geared towards aiding rural areas, others will be aiding urban areas. So eligibility requirements will be different and the application processes will also be different. Uh, next slide please. I'm going to be talking a, a little bit more regarding the Federal Commission, Federal Communications Commission, I'm sorry. Um, or also known as the FCC. Now, this commission is in charge of regulating both interstate and international communications that take place through radio, television, satellite, cable, and wire across all 50 states. The District of Columbia and US territories, for example, Puerto Rico. Um, Puerto Rico is not considered to be a state, however, it's still part of US territory. So the FCC does um, work uh, in these territories. Also, the FCC is responsible for the enforcement and. Also, the FCC is responsible for the enforcement and the implementation of communication laws and regulations. I will now pass it on to Valeria, which will talk about cybersecurity and infrastructure. Next slide, please.
Good morning, my name is Valeria Gonzalez, I am a master's student in information technologies at the College of Engineering, and I'll be presenting about cybersecurity. It is important to put emphasis on cybersecurity because cyber attacks against municipalities are increasing and becoming more sophisticated and severe as more local governments adopt new technologies and offer services that are integrated with online networks. Next slide, please. I want to highlight four considerations. The first one is that we will have to implement cyber safety trainings to all of our employees that have access to a local government computer system or database. Another consideration is that according to the Fiber Broadband Association, fiber optic internet infrastructure is less vulnerable to cyber attacks. The third one is the budget. A recent study by Deloitte and the Financial Service Information Sharing and Analysis Center found that the financial service, on average, spend 10% of the IT budget on cybersecurity. That's approximately between 0.2% to 0.9% of the company's revenue. The last one is that we will have to classify the legal implications to establish cybersecurity and to know if it can be outsourced. Now, I'll pass it along to my coworker and fellow at the Lawyer Center, Ale. Thank you.
Hi, morning, everyone, my name is Anaandra Belmont, and I am pursuing my master's in biomedical engineering at UTEP. So, I'll go ahead and turn off my camera. Could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you, okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about broadband infrastructure. So, we did conduct a bit of research to see what kind of service providers or methods that this broadband is being given to communities. So, we found digital subscriber line, cable modem, and wireless, which are more commonly known. There's also satellite and broadband over power lines. But the one that we wanted to put our main focus on was fiber optics. And fiber optics basically takes electrical signals, converts them into light through transferring glass fibers. One thing to note about fiber optics is that it exceeds speeds provided by DSL by about 100 times. So, that would make it a lot faster, a lot more accurate, and a lot more efficient. One other thing to note that I want to mention is that regions are affected by climate. So, because we are in El Paso, I do want to talk a little bit about the temperature, right? So, we do hit super high temperatures, but we also tend to hit super low temperatures. So, one thing that I want to mention is we're affected by rainfall and occasional flooding. So, about, we get about 9.7 inches annually of rainfall. And that would affect the way that these broadbands are functioning. I want to note that there's also 21 million damages to public infrastructure noted. And the one thing to mention about fiber optics is that high winds, rainfalls, sandstorms, anything can affect the material that's being used, such as copper, fiber, and coaxial cables. Now, I'm going to go ahead and give it, pass it on to my coworker, Eric.
Good morning, everyone, my name is Eric Mendez, and I'm currently pursuing a master's degree in electrical engineering with a concentration in mechatronics. Now, I'm going to turn it off my camera. And next slide, please. So, fiber optic internet is a way of communication using light pulses instead of electricity. In fiber optics, the last mile is the connection between the residential and businesses, and the middle mile is the connection of those local networks into the backpool network, which is basically the one that is in charge of connecting everyone into the web. Of those last mile fiber connection, fiber is delivered to the street cabinet to around 1,000 feet from the farthest internet service providers. According to the fiber master plan of the city of Golden, Colorado, fiber is considered to be a great option for municipal communication, broadband services, and internet access. When it comes to efficiency, fiber optics involves higher speeds of up to the gigabits per second through very long distances. It has a life cycle of up to 50 years, and it is very efficient for places with multiple users. Next slide, please. So, a lot of cities are talking about increasing the use of fiber optics. And actually, a 2020 report from Tyler Cooper of Broadband Now presents some important percentages of some places with fiber coverages and number of fiber providers in the US. And as you can see in this table below, Texas has a total of 166 fiber providers. Next slide, please. Another option to consider is called the T V white space, which is a wireless broadband connection. It is special for rural areas, as it can travel large distances of up to 10 kilometers without cables, and it can go through multiple obstacles. They are able to use solar power, so this could be a good idea, a good option to consider for El Paso. Oblique connectivity is a theme used for strategies to develop communication technology and to reduce costs. Basically, here, cities need to raise the digital division between social levels. They should also think about very efficient design distributions and future possibilities, and that it is important to combine wireline and wireless operations because the cost of maintaining separate networks is high. And actually, the Microsoft Airband Initiative also agreed with the combination of multiple types of technologies. Next slide, please. Now, we're going to talk about the future implementation with municipal. I'm going to pass it along to Manali.
Hello, good morning, everyone, my name is Manali. I just completed my master's in software engineering here at UTEP. I will be talking about future work in terms of smart city. Please let me turn off my camera so that we can see the whole thing. We can use broadband as an existing infrastructure to make use of artificial intelligence and data analysis to support a strong and healthy economic, social, and cultural development in the city. We can use smart city technology to monitor and manage traffic for plants, crime detection, schools, and hospitals. One of the most used technologies is traffic control. We can use smart meters to find energy savings done by the locals and can use it to provide efficient public services. We can use smart traffic lights to control the traffic based on real-time traffic condition. Let's learn more about smart city in terms of smart rules. I would like to invite Mohammed, my colleague, to talk a little bit more about it. Next slide, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Mohammed Azmi, and I'm a master's student in mechanical engineering. So, based on 2017 traffic data, 15 out of 50 deaths from road accidents happened on the I-10 highway. Smart Pavement has the ability to calculate if a car crashes and instantly alert emergency services. There is also a system called V2X. It is a short-range wireless technology that allows vehicles to communicate with each other. And with broadband implementation, this system are able to work smoothly and effectively. This implementation could lead to more than 85,000 fewer car accidents and 300 fewer deaths in over 20 years. It also cuts emergency response time by 20 to 35%. Without further ado, I'll pass it back to Andrea for discussion points and questions. Next slide, please.
Well, staff and students, thank you so much, that was a wonderful presentation. We did want to emphasize today that what we're advocating for is not funding for municipal broadband, but funding that could be used to provide for a study, to pay for a study that would allow us to dive into this very diverse and very complex topic and then be able to make some decisions about the risks involved with it and the costs involved with it, and whether it's feasible actually in a county like ours. And so, that's what we're advocating for today. So, Andrea, thank you so much for this opportunity, and we're prepared now to take any questions that you may have.
Mike, Mr. Garcia, just I just wanted to thank you for, I don't know where to start because this is the best and the brightest of our university. You could see the caliber of each one of the students and their passion. You know, I'm hoping that each one of you, I'll always make my pitch that you consider staying in El Paso. We need, you're our future, and this is an incredible presentation that highlights the capability of a partnership like with the Lawyer Center and also with UTEP. And I've been saying all along is that when the university leads us into the future, we're always much better off, the resources, the academia, the, all the backing that we get is amazing. And I just want to let the students know that, you know, that one of the things that's very important for us at Commissioner's Court is the accessibility. And, you know, I've said, you know, whether it's transportation, healthcare, you know, broadband, being able to communicate, it's always such an important element of what we do. To be able to be anywhere in the county that has the same equality and the same situation is so important to us. We talk about, you know, are trying to have parks like they have in the city, or a swimming pool, or anything like that. But technology is also so important in our efforts to communicate. And the rural areas has been challenging in our effort that we're headed into this idea of being connected through technology and yet having such an enormous gap between us and the rural areas and not being able, whether it's census, or whether anything that we want to do, sometimes we'll rely on online. And if you've seen with the pandemic, we've been having to, you know, deal with each other the way we are right now. This is the new normal, but it's not even normal in normal situations for the rest of our community to be able to have the things and the accessibility and the technology that everyone has. And there shouldn't be, and I'll reiterate, there shouldn't be any individual in our county that should be at a disadvantage from anybody else. And that's something that I know the commissioners do a great job of striving for that equality in every precinct to be able to say that there is no difference, and eventually, that there is no difference between living in in Favens or living in the west side of El Paso or any part of El Paso. So, I do want to thank you, it's very comprehensive. We've always believed research is something that we're lacking. I've advocated recently with Betsy and I talked about the type of research that we need is specifically in our demographics here in El Paso and the relationship that we could have with UTEP to supply and support us with the research that we need to make the right decisions. Whether it's understanding the virus from our demographics, which are very specific and different, or whether it's understanding the accessibility of technology in our community, they all come hand in hand. So, once again, to all the students, Mr. Garcia, as always, your level of commitment and your partnership has always been amazing. And so, the students, thank you so much, always consider El Paso in your future. If you do go somewhere, you know, have a return ticket at all times, and we're going to be very welcoming to your caliber of and I think people don't realize when we say we have a brain drain in El Paso, we don't quite understand. But when you're witnessing the type of presentation and the things that you're doing, that's when it stings, when we lose people to other communities. This broadband, this technology is one more cluster that workforce has identified. You know, we talk a lot about healthcare as being one of the big clusters, but technology is another way, and this partnership is another way of keeping our talented individuals to stay here in El Paso. So, you're looking at that presentation really adds to a lot of different dimensions. You know, whether it's the educational component, the communication of our constituents, creating, you know, another cluster or reinforcing our technology cluster, we need that foundation. So, obviously, as you could see, I'm very, you know, supportive of trying to understand this situation. Like I said, all our commissioners have been very, you know, very supportive of that. I know Commissioner Perez has been very supportive of broadband and not able to be here today with us, but I know that he too is extremely supportive of that. So, Andrea, once again, you and Betsy have brought the situation to the forefront for the commissioners that's just, you know, exemplary. And we thank you for all the work that you do to create this partnership. UTEP is going to be a big part of our future for us in our, in our community, and having this relationship is really valuable. So, Andrea, we thank you for what you've done, Betsy for your support for this to happen.
Judge, we actually do have a few more slides. There are some areas that I would like to get some direction from the court on. So, if we could go to those slides, we'll try and wrap things up relatively quickly. I realize that we're coming up on close to an hour for the presentation. So, if you could go to the next slide, Miguel. So, thank you so much again to the Lawyer Center and your team, Mike, you know, for all the work that you all have been able to put into this. I just want to reiterate to the court before we move forward what Michael was saying with regard to what we're asking for the court to consider potentially funding today. And so, what we're looking at funding is really an immediate kind of addressment of the issues that we're facing here in El Paso, and that is to undo the FCC maps. And I'll explain a little bit more what that is in depth. But if I could just ask the Lawyer Center team to stay on for the end of the presentation, that way if the court has questions, you would be here to be able to help me facilitate that. So, again, just reiterating, the FCC currently shows El Paso County as covered for high-speed internet. This is extremely important because a covered map shows that we do not need additional broadband infrastructure. And for anyone who lives here in the El Paso area or works here, we understand that that is likely not the case, just about anywhere in El Paso. So, the FCC creates these maps, as was mentioned earlier, by census data, but they also do it, or by census maps. They also do it by reaching out to the companies who cover those census tracts, and they ask the companies whether or not they cover that particular census tract. If the company says that they do, those maps are then reported as being covered. So, the information is not being provided by customers, it is being provided by companies. So, if we want the FCC maps to be redrawn, which we are going to have to do in order to be able to access the federal funding that is out there, a customer analysis is required. Next slide, please. So, this is a map of, you know, the current El Paso area that is showing, you know, whether or not we are currently covered by broadband or high-speed internet access. So, you can tell from this map in general, it indicates that the entire county is technically covered by some form of high-speed internet. And again, as was mentioned earlier, that could be in the form of broadband, it could be in the form of wireless, but regardless, it is showing that we are covered. Next slide, please. So, the CARES Act, you know, mid-April made available about $1.5 billion in funding for broadband initiatives. Some of the key programs that those funds cover include rural utility services as well as telehealth services. So, telehealth services, as was mentioned earlier, are something that could very easily help a number of the individuals, especially the older at-risk population throughout our county, be able to access different healthcare initiatives without having to leave their home. This, again, is something that the federal government has put quite a bit of funding behind, and there is an annual allocation of $600 million put behind this. Next slide. So, some of the options that we have, you know, for improving countywide broadband could include going for a grant, which would be sought after in 2021, fiscal year 2021. Both the EDA and the USDA have indicated that they will have an extreme amount of funding available. However, there will be a grant match required for that. Now, just to reiterate to the court, if you remember, when we first discussed broadband initiatives, it was during the March 4th strategic session that we had at the JPD. That was the first time that we had brought up the potential for looking into some sort of broadband program in the county. And that was the point where we contacted the Lawyer Center and started getting to work on the very in-depth presentation that they were able to put together today. So, this top portion was what we brought to you about two months ago for a potential broadband project where we were looking for a match to move forward with a much larger study. What we are considering for the court today is a total grant of approximately $266,000. If we wanted to go for a If we wanted to go for a grant to cover the full 266, the match could be up to $132,000. However, there is an alternative for this. We could look at taking matching funds to come from the county's impact fund, I'm sorry, rather than taking matching funds from the county's impact fund. We could pay for this outright using matching funds from municipalities. Or from the individuals that are at various organizations that have. Indicated that they would be interested in partnering with us, so I, I guess the two options that I'm trying to. Make sure that I get across here is that the court can go out for a grant. We can pay for, you know, things with a match. Or the court could decide to pay for things outright today and ask for each one of the cities to help fund that $266,000. The benefit of that would be that we would have a completed study. In the time that it would take for us to start looking at and applying for a federal grant, which we may or may not receive. Next slide. So again, just to kind of reiterate what I was just mentioning, we, we are recommending to the court or asking for the court's direction to. Pay for the total cost of $266,000 utilizing CARES Act funding. Both from the county and then potentially we're asking the court to consider. Allowing the municipalities to participate in that $266,000. By giving back or buying in a portion of, of the 266,000 through the monies that we are, are giving them through the larger pot. Next slide please. So again, just to reiterate, you know, this $266,000 could be paid for all from county funds. With buy-in from each of the municipalities and some of the nonprofits in the county. Which would allow us to be able to qualify for even larger funding pots this fall. So this is the most important part that I want the court to consider. If we were to pay for a study now that could be completed by the fall. Rather than apply for this 266,000 in the fall. We could potentially pay for and pay for, I'm sorry, apply for a much larger grant. To cover additional infrastructure costs. So paying for the, the customer service or the customer analysis now. Could put us where we are able to qualify for much larger grants in the fall. Next slide. So if the court could at this time, please provide us with some direction on, on where you would like for this to go. I think Betsy may have some, some input to, to provide as well, based on some discussions that I know that she's had with a few of the municipalities. Herself, so at this point, I'll, I'll hand things over to Betsy.
Thank you Andrea. Judge. Commissioners, just in our conversations this week with the smaller municipalities. About the projects that the county has been working on and using or proposing to use CARES Act funding for. They, some of them did express interest in partnering with us on this. This particular funding for this market analysis. I would recommend that we use CARES Act funding because. It, it is relevant to being able to have a communication system countywide. During COVID-19, we have been looking for different ways, we even discussed this. The task force has been discussing this in its communications subcommittee. About what methods there are to communicate countywide with all of our people who live in El Paso. In El Paso County. And we've talked about the limited access to information and what, what challenges that creates. And how important it is, so if we used a portion of this funding to help us. Get this market study so that we could apply for additional funding, which significant funding is being allocated specifically for broadband, as Andrea mentioned. It would be really helpful for us to, to work towards drawing down those dollars in the future. So I would ask that the court authorize. The county to use up to $266,000 in CARES Act funding. But also look for if any of that portion could be funded through partnerships. With our smaller municipalities who would like to participate in this.
Thank you, Betsy, you know, it's always good, like we could do things now that address. A situation, you know, that's now, this, you know, we could take advantage now, but. What it does for our future and with the kinds of things that we need for our future, that's always such a good thing, you know. Sometimes we'll use money directly for COVID and to address it and then that's pretty much where it ends, it starts and ends, but. This one sort of gives us a foundation and further infrastructure for the future. And I, I know it's hard to slice so many pieces of the, of our money and our funding. But I think this is one that's really, we should really consider. As, as, you know, fundamental and then a foundation for a lot of things that we want to do. From the traffic control to all the things we want to do going forward, I think it lends itself very well to that. I think the municipalities, I know they're struggling with their budgets and we've had a lot of discussions about how tight they are. But I do feel that they would be very welcoming. For these kinds of infrastructures and opportunities going in the future, which might, you know, help us fund a portion of that. So just, you know, I'm very excited about the possibility and I'd like to hear from. The other Commissioners to see what their thoughts are and then their views on, on this particular project, so I'll start with Commissioner Stoudt.
Oh, sorry, Judge Commissioners Erica Rosales. Sorry about that, sorry to interrupt you Commissioners, I just wanted to jump in to, to clarify what. What Economic Development Department is asking the court, so this will, this will not be for, this isn't posted for action, so the court can opine as to which option. It is the most interested in, the department would later bring. An item for the court to take action, whether that might be to approve to apply for a grant. Possibly to approve a contract in connection with the study, but I just wanted to make it clear that the court doesn't have to take action or make a specific decision, just some direction on which option the court is interested in.
Thank you Erica.
Go ahead, Commissioner Stoudt.
Thanks, yeah, so first of all. Thank you so much to the students that, that put this presentation together today, very informative. Love the fact that we, that we get the opportunity to, to have you all come and present to us and, and show us the great work you've done and so. And I, and I, I agree 100% with, with. With y'all's recommendation, I, I do think that we, that we definitely need to. Spend the money on the, on the feasibility study. And I, and, and I definitely advocate for, for doing it, for doing it right away, I understand the. The benefits of, of doing that and so I, I support that, the recommendation of, of, of our staff. Just one question. So, you know, regardless of. You know, whether we, we spend the money upfront or not, can we, can, can we still apply for the grant, I mean, so if we spend the money upfront out of CARES Act, the whole 266,000. We can't apply for the grant and reimburse ourselves later, I mean, and kind of do both. You know, concurrently, simultaneously, that's not an option?
Commissioner, the reason why that would not be an option is if we were to be awarded the grant. You're not allowed, it'll require us to have a cash match. And you're not allowed to use CARES Act funding for that cash match. So then we would have to go back and pay for that. Portion that we would have to fund under a cash match out of the general fund. So, so we could do that, but we would be committing to fund approximately. I think it's about $53,000, $54,000 out of general fund into the future if we were to be awarded. And a lot of grants, I, I'd have to look at the wording on this one, but a lot of grants require that work not have started prior to the grant.
Yes ma'am, that, that is correct, Betsy, and if I could also just add in, in response to that. Having this work already completed and showing the need and the demand. Will allow us to be more competitive for much larger grants in the future. So that's really kind of, you know, why we are starting with this, you know, bottom piece of the pyramid, if you will. Because we all know, I think that there's going to be a lot more that's going to be needed and, and so this is kind of the. The basic first step that we need to be able to take to show just how much of a demand that we have. And then we can apply for much larger grants in the future.
Yeah, I know, I mean, there's no question about, about, you know, I mean, for me. Going forward with, you know, with doing it, with, with doing it, doing it right now, you know, I was just curious because I mean, if, 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 you know, we. Were able to apply for the grant that we're talking about right now and. And utilize it and it would only cost us $50,000 instead of 266,000 and we could do it concurrently, I mean, it would. And so I understand that, that you can't do it with CARES Act funding, I still am curious though. I mean, it, it may, it may be. It, it may be that we want to do it out of the general fund because we can get some of that, some of that funding back and. And then we can take, you know, and then we have more CARES Act funding to, to spend on other things that may come up, but. You know, I, I definitely think that whichever way we end up going, we, we definitely need to do it as soon as possible and. That's what I think.
Thank you Commissioner Stoudt. Okay Andrea, you want to take, take it back and see what. You know, what we need to do here and, you know, I know we are supportive as Commissioners Court and. So is it a consensus Erica, we just need to, to, to just provide Andrea with direction, which I think we, we have.
Right Andrea, that's right, Andrea, if you feel like that's sufficient direction, then that's, that's all the court needs to do.
It absolutely is, yes, so, so our next steps then, as Erica had mentioned, would be to put together an agreement with municipalities who are interested in. Providing a portion of the funding as well through their CARES Act. And so we'll hope to get something like that put together between ourselves and the Lawyer Center and the Hunt Institute in the next couple of weeks. And I know that the team is going to be extremely excited to, to, you know, hopefully move forward on things quickly, so thank you all so much.
Thank Andrea, as you know, our Friday meetings with the rural mayors would help to give them a, an insight, we'd welcome. You know, Mr. Garcia and any students to do a quick presentation, whatever is that we could do, I think we've got a great. Thing going with the mayors, their legal department and their staff and so whatever we could do to. To encourage and, and get them to understand the, the impact, I, I think it'd be a great forum for you, so you're very welcome to. To put this together for us, for one of our Friday meetings.
And thank you all again so much, we certainly are here to support you on any of those kinds of things and we're here to serve.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Garcia, Commissioner Leon, please.
Just without repeating everything that's already been said, I think this is a wonderful program. As you know, I'm very protective of, of the general fund during these times. My only question is, is there any portion of it that would qualify for a revenue bond as we move forward into the future?
So yes sir, I mean, I'll, I'll let Betsy, you know, respond to the, to the bulk of that, but you know, as we. Get this, this initial study done, because before we move forward with anything, we're going to have to quantify the actual demand that's out there. So if there, there shows that there is, you know, only a demand in certain areas, then, then yes, the court may want to decide to. You know, just move forward with providing infrastructure for very small areas. The study could come back and say, you know, this is actually a countywide issue. Where there are pockets across the county that broadband needs to be improved and that, that will come at a much larger, larger price tag. So I, I really think that, you know, the ideal thing to do would be to let this study. Run its course and, and see the findings that come from it so that we can identify problem areas. And, and as I mentioned, that could be the entire county, which, you know, would come at a much larger price tag. So, so, but yes sir, that is absolutely an option, different bonds are as well as, you know, larger grants, there. There could be anything from, you know, raising taxes in certain areas to, as we had mentioned, municipal broadband. So the court has a number of options, but we won't know what to recommend until this initial work is done.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Leon. Thank you very much once again, Mr. Garcia, what, what a great program, what a team of bright individuals and. And got to see a glimpse of the future. Of who'll be working here in our community and doing some great things for us, so thank you very much. Wish you all a great weekend as it's coming up.
Thank you all.
Item number six. Thank you sir, item number six. Receive a benefits presentation regarding TCD RS. And the County of El Paso Health and Dental Plan Design for Plan Year 2021 and provide direction to staff as necessary.
Good morning Judge, good morning Commissioners, Melissa Carrillo with Human Resources. This morning, we have two different benefits presentations that we would like to share with the court. As we get, begin our budget preparations for FY21. Our first presenter is Ms. Roxanne Aldridge, she is our Employer Services Representative from TCD RS. And she will be followed by Mr. Sam Trujillo and Ms. Verenice Acosta. With the Human Resources Department regarding a review of our Health and Dental Plan Review for FY21. Based on current claims and expense trends. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Roxanne Aldridge, Roxanne.
Thank you Melissa, good morning. I have a presentation that I will be sharing with you. I'm not going to go through the entire presentation, I believe you'll have access to it and then we'll take questions. Next slide please. So TCD RS currently serves over 305,000. Members and retirees, over 780 counties and districts in the state of Texas. And overall, system-wide, we are about 88% funded. Which is a fantastic funded ratio for all of our employers, next slide please. We were created in 1967 by Texas Legislature, we do not receive funding from the state of Texas, the money that comes into TCD RS. Comes in from employee and employer contributions as well as investment return. On average, our operating costs are about 0.23% of our assets, to compare that to. Defined contribution type plans, they typically charge between 1 and 2% of assets. Were managed independently by nine-member board of trustees appointed by the Texas Governor with the approval of the Texas Senate. Next slide please. The three main features that set TCD RS apart from other retirement plans, not just in the state of Texas, but nationwide, is that we are a savings-based benefit. Both employees and the employers are saving in advance. For this benefit that will be provided when an employee retires. We have responsible plan funding, that means each year we look at every single plan. And we change the cost of the plan to make sure that you as an employer are not overpaying. Or underpaying for the benefits you've promised your employees. You cannot pay less than the actual cost of your plan, however, you do have flexibility and local control, so if you need to adjust the benefits that you currently have in place. You do have that option on an annual basis, next slide please. Next slide. This is just a general overview of how the retirement works from the employee's point of view. So for each one of your employees, 7% of each paycheck they receive before taxes is deposited into their individual account. Their individual account will earn 7% compounded interest annually. Next slide please. At the point of retirement, they're going to receive the match from the county. So notice that it's at the point of retirement, if your employees quit. Before they retire, they withdraw their account balance, they are not privy to the match that the county has been saving for them. So once they get to retirement, they apply for retirement, they will receive $2.50, which is the current match for the county. For every dollar that is in their account. This plan will provide a lifetime benefit to your employees, at retirement, they get to select. One of seven options, how they would like to get paid and that varies depending on whether or not. Beneficiary gets money and if they do how much, but to the actual retiree, they would receive a lifetime benefit. Next slide please. This is specific to El Paso County, on average, your employees are age 43 and they have 11 years of TCD RS service. As far as your retiree profile, on average, they retire at age 58 with 20 years of service. And they have an average annual TCD RS benefit of $32,800. Next slide please. In 2018, we paid out 1.5 In two thousand eighteen, we paid out one point five billion dollars in benefits to all of our retirees. In El Paso County, we paid about a little over forty seven and a half million dollars. Through studies that we have done in the past, economic impact studies, we found that about ninety six percent of the money that. We pay to our retirees remain in the communities where they have worked and retired. So if that's true for El Paso County. Then ninety six percent of forty seven and a million forty seven and a half million dollars is a significant amount. That was put back into the local community. Next slide, please. Here's your snapshot of your current level of benefits. You currently have an employee deposit rate of seven percent. Your options as the court for your employees each year are to select between four and seven percent, so four, five, six, or seven. So you can adjust the employee deposit rate in any given year within those parameters, up or down. The current matching that you are providing at retirement is two hundred and fifty percent. Your options are between one hundred to two hundred and fifty percent in any number divisible by five. If you lower your match, it's going to be from next January going forward. And so the past, you'll still be responsible for matching. Two hundred and fifty percent. The current vesting that the county has in place is eight years of service. The only option here is to lower it to a five-year vesting, which then would make it. Easier for your employees, faster for your employees to retire. And then there are three eligibility requirements in place. Whichever one your employees meet first, they're eligible. The first one is age sixty with your current vesting, so age sixty with eight years, eight years of service. The rule of seventy five. That says age plus years of service has to equal to at least seventy five. That's the lowest that you could have. There is no other option. And then twenty years of service at any age. So no matter the age of the individual, if they have twenty years of service, they're eligible to retire. Also, this is one of the lowest options. There are no, there is nothing lower than twenty years of service. Next slide, please. This is your current replacement ratio based on the level of benefits that the county has in place, meaning seven percent employee deposit rate and two hundred and fifty matched at retirement. And it shows what percent of an employee's final salary at retirement. Is replaced by TCD RS depending on how long they work for the county. So on the far left side, we're looking at someone hired at fifty five, retired at sixty five. So they have ten years of service. They would get twenty five percent of their salary replaced by TCD RS. On the far right side, we're looking at a thirty-year-old, thirty-year career employee hired at thirty five. Retired at sixty five, they would get ninety seven percent of their salary replaced. We saw earlier in your retiree profile that on average, employees retire after twenty years of service. So if that's true. You're looking more at the middle column, hired at forty five, retired at sixty five. So that's a twenty-year. Career employee, so about fifty seven percent of their salary would be replaced by TCD RS. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Investment return plays a very important role in TCD RS. I mentioned earlier that we do not receive money from the state of Texas. That money that comes into TCD RS comes in from employee deposits, employer contributions, and investment earnings. For every dollar that we pay in benefits, ten cents comes from employee deposits, thirteen cents from employer contributions. And seventy seven cents comes from investment earnings. We do have a highly diversified portfolio. Next slide, please. And we have a very highly diversified portfolio because we want to make sure that we are controlling risk, since risk directly impacts our employers. So that means every year when you get your cost, your new cost for the following year, you're not going to see that rate jump up really high or really low. Next slide, please. We have a very long-term investment horizon at TCD RS. When you think about it. On average, system-wide, an employee works about eighteen years before they retire. And then they retire another twenty years plus. So that's a very long, you're looking at thirty-plus years for each retiree that we have to manage. Our thirty-year investment return is eight percent, and this is as of the end of twenty nineteen. One more slide and we're going to move on to the plan assessment. Next slide, please. So this is showing our actual returns since the year two thousand. Now, we assume at TCD RS that. We will make eight percent investment return every single year. We know that's impossible because we can't control the market like that. So we know we're going to have years when our returns will fall above or below our expected. Eight percent. As you just saw, our thirty-year return is eight percent. So you can see how the returns have through the years gone above and below our expected eight percent. Now, one note, because we are in a very exceptional year, we do anticipate losses this year in twenty twenty. Due to COVID. So what this means is. We are making all of our employers very aware. Of the impact that losses will have on their plan. We don't know what it's going to be because we don't have our returns until December thirty first. So on December thirty first of each year, we take a snapshot. Of what the returns are on that day, and that's going to determine our return for the year. So with that in mind, anytime we have gains or losses that come from investment return, we smooth them over a five-year period. So we spread losses and gains over a five-year period. And we do that again to make sure your cost doesn't go really high and really low on an annual basis, because for your budget purposes. It would be a nightmare having to deal with really high and really low costs on an annual basis. If you're anticipating making, enhancing your plan, like passing across the living adjustment for your retirees. This may not be the best year to do that, again, because of the fact that we're anticipating losses from investment return. If we could go to the plan assessment now, please. Which is a separate document.
Alexis, I don't know if you have that in your backup. Roxanne, you may have to walk them through that without being able to pull up the plan assessment. I think just the PowerPoint is in the backup.
Okay. Um, so what I wanted to share. On the plan assessment. Let's go back to the previous slide, please. I'm sorry, go back forward. One more. All right, let's stop, let's do this. So for twenty twenty one, your required rate is eighteen point oh one of payroll. It's going slightly up. Currently, this year, twenty twenty, your required rate is seventeen point nine percent. Now, we don't keep payroll information, so I wouldn't be able to tell you in dollars what that means to you. I believe Wally would be able to tell you, give you a better idea of what that is. So it's this required rate that changes every single year and. By paying this required rate, you're investing for your current employee's future benefits. So it's that savings in advance feature. And any unfunded liabilities that your plan has will be paid down within twenty years. Now. Looking at the eighteen point oh one percent losses that we will have this year will not impact your plan until twenty twenty two. So what that means is any negative impact to your plan. It will start, it will add on to the eighteen point zero one percent. So it will make that cost even higher. For twenty twenty two and then the eighteen point oh one that you currently see in place. Now, I know we don't have this in the presentation, but I'm going to. Just briefly. Tell you your valuation results as of the end of twenty nineteen.
We have a.
The cost of your plan is at the end of twenty nineteen is about one point one billion dollars. The assets available to pay for that, that includes both employee and employer contributions is about nine hundred and seventy-three million dollars. The difference between the cost of your plan and your assets is a hundred and sixty million dollars, which is your unfunded liability. It makes your plan. Eighty-five point nine percent funded. So you might remember in the beginning, I said, system-wide, we're at about eighty-eight percent funded. So the county is just slightly below eighty-eight percent, the funded ratio of eighty-eight percent.
And Judge Commissioners, this is Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. When Roxanne referred to the estimate. On what that would be for upcoming fiscal year, it's just a little over half a million dollars from a budgetary perspective. And on the funding ratio of eighty-five point nine percent, that is a slight increase over the prior fiscal year as well. So we're moving in the right direction and closer to the system-wide average.
Here you go. This is the document I just referenced. I'm not sure if you can see. Yeah, scroll middle of the page. So the first half of the page has a level of benefits that we went over in the presentation. And then there you see the eighteen point oh one percent for twenty twenty one, if you make no changes to your plan. And then at the bottom, you see under valuation results, the numbers I just gave you. And the funded ratio of eighty-five point nine percent. So I'm going to stop right here to see if there are any questions.
Judge, I've got a quick question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Leon.
Roxanne, thank you. A great presentation. You spoke about the cost of living and this court and the previous court, we've discussed that a lot. And we've. Gone in another direction insofar as cost of living because of the severe impact that has on the fund. But one thing that I have a question on is a one-time allotment, maybe not this year, in a future year, how does that impact the fund?
So an additional contribution, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, a one-time allotment that maybe equates to a two percent, one percent, one and a half percent. Not increase, but an allotment for that year to help the retirees.
Oh, you're talking about for retirees?
Yes.
Yes. So that's, we have two types of COLAs, two types of cost of living adjustments that you can select from. One is a CPI or Consumer Price Index COLA. The other one is the flat rate that you're mentioning. The flat rate, it's going to get capped each year by our board, so it doesn't outpace inflation. So. Typically, in the last few years, the maximum we could pass is two percent. So. Even a flat-rate COLA, it's going to be pure unfunded liability. It's going to take fifteen years to pay off. And it will definitely increase the cost to the county. It's an easy. Option that we can run to see, or Wally can run, or Melissa can run, to see how much it's going to cost the county for next year. We could only do it for the following year. I understand you may not be visiting with it for a few years. But right now, you could basically just look at it, if you were to pass it for twenty twenty one, what would it cost? But it still will be pure unfunded liability. It's a cost associated with the past, and it will take fifteen years to pay it off.
See, maybe, this is the area that I misunderstand that possibly. I thought that a one-time allotment, and I'm trying to stay away from the word bonus. That we cut each retiree, let's say, a check for X amount. I didn't realize that this also has future funding effects.
I see. You're not referring to passing across the living adjustment through TCD RS. You're just talking about doing something on the county side. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so that is between you and your retirees. That has nothing to do with us. The only thing that would have repercussions to your plan is if you actually were to pass a cost of living adjustment. Now, if you're doing this to actual employees who have not retired, you would still have to take out the seven percent for the employee deposit. Because that's considered wages. But as far as your retirees, that's, again, that's between you and your retirees.
Okay, thank you. I was specifically targeting the retirees. Thank you.
Okay.
And Roxanne, the only thing that I want to clarify, I'm sorry, Judge Commissioner. The issue that we had run into in the past with our retirees is, as we determine whatever funding increases or changes or cost of livings, as Roxanne describes. Would be, we have to be cognizant that we would also be financing those well into the future. And Roxanne, correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember at one point we said, any increase we give this year ideally would take us fifteen years to pay off. And I may be incorrect, but I remember that Amy had said that to us at one point. Otherwise, an option to ensure that we don't incur that funding well into the future. Is to front-load the cost of that benefit, whatever it be. So if the court was interested in providing a one percent or a two percent. Cost of living adjustment to its retirees, and that equated to half a million dollars, if we would front-load that money, then it would not need to be financed. Otherwise. It rolls into those rates that we pay and it occurs for the next, for years well into the future.
That's correct. So there is, you have the option, if you pass a cost of living adjustment. To basically pay for all of it upfront instead of letting it roll over a fifteen-year period. And again, that's going to be something. Fairly easy to figure out what the actual upfront cost is. And we could easily do that if you were wanting to see it for twenty twenty one, for example, like a one percent COLA.
No, thank you very much. We got into another area that I wasn't talking about specifically, that just one-time payment, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other questions for me?
Thank you, Roxanne. Betsy, any additional comments from your experience with these? Initiative and L S, the same from Melissa to give us sort of a, you know, how does that relate to us and to the budget and to what we'd like to do going forward and some of our. Philosophical premises about our employees and retirees?
Yes, sir. Basically, on the concept of your employees or our employees. Generally, the court has reviewed this each year and takes that into consideration as a salary and benefit expense. Right now, we are contracted to maintain the same level of retirement benefits. With our law enforcement agreement with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Association. So if the court were to want to change anything about this, we would need to reopen those negotiations. Otherwise, we will plan for this increase in our FY twenty one budget that we will be. Bringing forward in August with Commissioners Court.
Thank you, Betsy. Melissa, any further comments that would. Sort of wrap it around as to what you'd like to see from our Commissioners Court?
Thank you, Judge. No, I would absolutely echo Betsy's comments. It's a presentation that we do for the court every year. As we lead into budget hearings in August, we wait for the actuarial numbers to come in from TCD RS, which we usually receive at the end of April. And we try to present to the court really what those numbers will look like as we prepare for any increase to our budget for FY twenty one. So. Again, as Betsy's just described, right now, due to that clause that's within the collective bargaining agreement. We do not have an opportunity to adjust those numbers up or down. However, if the court was interested, we could definitely set up a meeting and work with the collective bargaining team as necessary.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes, sir. Okay. If there are no other questions from our court, I would like to thank Roxanne. Thank you so much for logging in. Much appreciated. And Commissioners, we'll move on to our second portion of our benefits presentation. Sam Trujillo and Verenice Acosta, who will review our medical and plan design for FY twenty one based on current trends and claims expenses. Sam?
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. This is Sam Trujillo, my senior deputy human resource officer for the County of El Paso. And today I'm joined by Verenice Acosta, who is our benefits manager for the Human Resources Department. And Randy McGraw, who is our contracted medical plan consultant and senior vice president of Hub International. So we know that much of our focus over the last few months has been on COVID nineteen and rightfully so. However, behind the scenes, our staff has been working hard on both contingency plans and on medical plan designs for next year. So we want to thank the court for giving us this opportunity to provide a mid-year status of our medical plan and to provide information. On recommended changes and programs for plan year twenty twenty one, which starts on January one of twenty twenty one. So even though we are only midway through our plan, we will be able to report on some early trends. we will be able to report on some early trends and still have enough time to make changes if necessary before open enrollment, which occurs in October of this year. So the plan design we are bringing to your attention today is for twenty twenty-one, and it has been discussed and reviewed by the county's Risk Pool Board during their regular meetings on April fifteenth of twenty twenty, and again on May twentieth of twenty twenty. So absent any significant impacts from COVID nineteen or from any unexpected claim issues, the Risk Pool Board has approved the recommendations that staff will be presenting to the court today. I would like to ask, now ask our Benefits Manager, Verenice Acosta, to present the court with the status of our current plan. Veda?
Thank you, Sam. Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Verenice Acosta with the Human Resources Department. If we can move on to the next slide, please. Before you is a list of variety of benefit options currently being provided by the county through the Human Resources Department Benefit Section. However, today, we will be focusing on the medical, dental, and the health savings account. Next slide, please. Under the medical plan, the county is currently providing services to county employees and their dependents, and to retirees and their dependents. For Medicare-eligible retirees, they're eligible to participate in the county's Group Medicare Advantage Plan, also known as the MAP. And just a quick overview, the total monthly MAP premium is currently at two hundred and twenty dollars, in which the county subsidizes fifty percent of the premium, which means that retirees on the MAP only pay a hundred and ten dollars per month to participate in this plan. Now, as a reminder, this is a private insurance through Aetna. Therefore, the claims and/or contributions are not paid by the risk fund. Aetna assumes the risk on those under the MAP. So for employees and non-Medicare retirees, they currently have the option of participating in either the Core or the High Deductible Plan. And they also have the option of participating in one of the four tiers that you see before you. Next, I'll be going over our plan enrollment history and the Benefit Section performance measures. In this slide, we have two graphs showing historical medical enrollment and average by plan. Both graphs are as of March of twenty twenty and are compared year to year. As you can see, January and February are currently showing an increase in enrollment as they compare to the same months last year. As of last month, there were approximately twenty-four hundred employees and seventy-eight non-Medicare retirees enrolled in one of the county's medical plan. And there were approximately a hundred and thirty-nine retirees in the MAP plan. However, the retirees under the MAP are not shown under these graphs due to, again, the MAP not being funded through our risk fund. The graph to the right shows the average enrollment by plan. As you recall, during last year's budget sessions, the court approved the elimination of the high-cost buy-up plan for Plan Year twenty twenty. This plan had already seen a decrease in enrollment due in part of the education about the difference in cost of the three plans and incentives under the High Deductible Plan. And as of March of twenty twenty, there are approximately fourteen hundred members enrolled in the Core and a little over a thousand enrolled in the High Deductible Plan. We do like to note that the High Deductible Plan represents a twenty-nine percent increase from twenty nineteen and has experienced a dramatic increase in enrollment from twenty sixteen. Next slide, please. This slide here represents our Benefits twenty nineteen annual performance metrics. Throughout the year, staff maintains a log of services. We provide to employees to include the day, time, issue, and type of service. We do this in order to analyze where our resources would be best utilized. For twenty nineteen, we are showing Tuesday and Wednesday as our busiest days, along with the busiest times being from nine to ten a.m. You will notice that the majority of the inquiries for twenty nineteen were for open enrollment, and this has to do to having converted into a new online enrollment system, which did increase the amount of inquiries. The service by issue information, it assists us in identifying where we need to provide more education or marketing. We also developed a performance measure to determine if we are meeting the needs of our employees. The graph to the left, you'll see how long it takes to resolve an issue. And for twenty nineteen, out of over thirty-one hundred inquiries, ninety-six point seven percent of them were resolved within a twenty-four-hour time period. Next slide, please. These next two slides represent a list of notable accomplishments we've had in the past year, including the update to the twenty twenty Strategic Health and Wellness Plan. We update the wellness plan annually in an effort to continue improving our employees' healthy lifestyle, which is now going to include virtual programs and options for health risk assessments and health screenings. We also had the elimination of the buy-up plan. This decision was largely based on the annual cost compared to the other plans, as well as plan designs, changes to the Core Plan, which included increasing the deductible per individual, the out-of-pocket maximum, and increasing the copay. We also implemented the five hundred dollar freestanding ER copay. This is assisting and steering employees away from visiting these freestanding ERs, which is a high cost to both the employee and the plan, as well as implementation of the Medical Network in Mexico, which is available to Core Plan members only at this time. It gave us the ability to provide a network for those employees that are seeking services in Mexico for both medical and pharmacy services. We are also working on adding the dental plan to this option, which we will further discuss later on in the presentation, and as well as a telemedicine program similar to what is available for services in the U.S. We do want to note that we were seeing a steady increase in users in this program, but due to our current pandemic, it had an impact in utilization, and we don't believe we will be able to truly analyze this program until travel stabilizes. Next slide, please. Continuing on with the major accomplishments. Through our Consumer Driven Health Plan Health Savings Account Outreach Campaign, we have conducted several educational sessions for the High Deductible Plan and the Health Save, over two hundred buy-up plan members to include retirees. As we mentioned before, it resulted in a twenty-nine percent increase of membership into the High Deductible Plan. Also, the twelve hundred dollar HSA county contribution has also been a big contributor as an incentive for employees to enroll in the Consumer Driven Health Plan. As you saw in a previous slide, there was an enrollment increase in this plan this year, as well as the premium discounts for wellness screening, health risk assessments, and for being tobacco-free. The Beginning Right Program, this program is for expecting mothers who join the program. They will receive educational material and services as they go through their pregnancy term. And in twenty nineteen, there were approximately twelve employees who participated in this program. Lastly, the TeleDoc Program, which is a program that allows members to contact a provider twenty-four seven, by phone or by video, and are able to obtain a diagnosis and prescriptions. The copay is forty dollars for the Core and the High Deductible Plan members. We did see a spike in utilization for months, March and April, as a result of more people working from home. Next slide, please. Next, I'll be going over some impacts of the current pandemic that has had, not only with our medical plan, but also some of our programs. So within a two-week time period in the month of March, we had significant changes to our plan and/or our programs, such as the federal mandate for insurance companies to cover member COVID nineteen testing at a hundred percent benefit. Since we are self-funded, the cost comes directly from our Risk Pool Fund. We have not seen a lot of tests come through our plan yet, but we are tracking these costs and will keep the court updated as we experience changes. The TeleDoc Program also had an impact. With more members adhering to the stay-at-home orders, we are expecting increases in use of telemedicine, as we described in the previous slide. Individual costs are less expensive than normal office visits, but the usage is increasing. The next two items, the Healthy Lifestyle Reimbursement Program and the Gym Membership Payroll Deduction, they were suspended for the months of mid-March, April, and May due to the closure of gym businesses for the stay-home, stay-safe orders. However, they have been reactivated as of June first due to the business's reopening. Just a quick overview, the Healthy Lifestyle Program. This consists of an employee who is enrolled in one of the medical plans and attends a gym at least eight times per month for a consecutive six or twelve months, and receives a reimbursement. Lastly, the waiver of the ninety-day service waiting period for employees to enroll in our medical plan, which was approved by the court on March nineteenth and updated on March thirtieth. In the next slide, I'll be providing some statistics with regards to the ninety-day waiver. So the benefits for the employees who were part of the ninety-day waiver became effective April first. The graph before you illustrates the number of employees who were enrolled for the month of April. We are tracking claims and costs to the plan, which occur during any new hires' first ninety days so that we can provide a recommendation to the court for Plan Year twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. The next two slides represent staff and Risk Pool Board recommendations being worked on for Plan Year twenty twenty-one. I will start with the existing plan options that we are recommending to continue for Plan Year twenty twenty-one, and will follow with our new recommendations. So we're recommending to continue with the current plan options, which is the Core Plan and the Consumer Driven Health Plan. Continue with the current tier system, which is employee-only, employee and spouse, employee and child or children, and employee and family. We do want to note that we've reviewed a variety of tier options in the past, but the current four-tier system has worked best for our population. And lastly, continue with the Wellness Coordinator Position and Wellness Fund. A few years ago, the Risk Pool Board and Commissioner's Court approved a Wellness Coordinator Position and a one hundred thousand dollar per year Wellness Fund. Since that time, the county developed and operates under a Strategic Employee and Wellness Plan, which has been updated each year. This has been a highly successful program and has been recognized throughout the state of Texas. As well as, we're recommending to continue with the premium discounts. The county currently provides a premium discount for employees who participate in the annual health risk assessment and health screenings, and by being tobacco-free. So currently, employees receive a four percent premium discount if they complete both the HRA and the health screening, and a two percent premium discount if they indicate they are tobacco-free. This has been a good program in getting employees educated on their health and wellness. The cost of this program, just to give the court a brief overview, is approximately two hundred thousand dollars per year in premium discounts. However, benefits of having a healthy workforce would far exceed the cost. Next slide, please. So in this next slide are the new recommendations for Plan Year twenty twenty-one. Staff is currently vetting the ability and the option to provide our members with a high-performance or narrow network. This basically provides a lower-cost option, but narrows the network for a member to receive service. Last year, the court approved the addition of a Medical Network in Mexico, which began on January first of twenty twenty. With the addition of a Dental Network in Mexico, it will give the ability for us to provide a network for those employees that are seeking dental services in Mexico. At this time, medical is the only one available, is the only available option, but we do have the capability of adding the Dental Plan. Dental costs are lower for both the member and for the county for dental services in Mexico. Also, the county currently contracts with UMC to provide onsite clinic services. The UMC clinic contract changes includes moving forward towards a per-employee-per-month rate versus claims being processed through the plan. So staff will be bringing an inter-local agreement for consideration and approval by the court. And lastly, incentivizing the Consumer Driven Health Plan. Participation by contributing to the employee's Health Savings Account. Currently, the county is contributing twelve hundred dollars towards the employee's Health Savings Account for those in the Consumer Driven Health Plan. We are currently analyzing this year's data and have developed a couple of options for the court's consideration. But before I go over those options, I would like to give a quick overview of the revenue versus expenses under each plan and an overview of the Consumer Driven Health Plan. So next slide, please. So the table before you is an illustration of the total twenty nineteen revenue, which consists of the premiums from both the county and employee contribution under each plan in comparison with the total twenty nineteen claims-related expenses under each plan. We have also included the total HSA county contribution under the Consumer Driven Health Plan. The last column represents the net revenue and expenses under each plan. As depicted in the table, all plans show a loss. You will notice under the Consumer Driven Health Plan loss, it is about equal to the county's HSA contribution. However, we still want to encourage employees to enroll in the Consumer Driven Health Plan because the overall cost is lower and it trends slower. So on the next slide, I'll be going over in further detail regarding the trend for each plan. So if we can go on to the next slide. So prior to twenty twenty, the county offered three plans. The Buy-Up Plan, the Core Plan, and the Consumer Driven Health Plan. The green bar represents the Buy-Up, red is the Core, and blue is the Consumer Driven Health Plan. Due in part to the elimination of the Buy-Up Plan in combination with the county's Health Savings Account contribution incentive of twelve hundred dollars for Plan Year twenty twenty, the county experienced a dramatic shift to the High Deductible Plan and enrollment in the Health Savings Account. This is a positive change for the long-term health of our plan. Traditionally, High Deductible Plans are designed to change behavior where employees are incentivized to become better health consumers. Therefore, former Buy-Up Plan members either migrated to the Core or to the Consumer Driven Health Plan. And as a result, the members' relative risk moved with them, causing an increase in the average claims cost per member per month. However, as depicted in the tables before you, we do not expect costs to inflate as fast over time as traditional PPO plans. The Consumer Driven Health Plan still remains the best option for the long-term health of the county's medical plan. So next, I'll be going over the county Health Savings Account contribution options. Next slide, please. So before I discuss the options, in twenty sixteen, we implemented a six hundred dollar incentive for employees who were on or switched to the Consumer Driven Health Plan and enrolled in the Health Savings Account. We offered the six hundred dollar incentive again for twenty seventeen, and then increased it to twelve hundred dollars in twenty eighteen. So for Plan Year twenty eighteen, we did see a sixty-one percent increase into the Consumer Driven Health Plan. We went from approximately two hundred and ninety employees enrolled in that plan in twenty sixteen to over a thousand today. So this was originally supposed to be a one-year incentive, but it was well-received by the county administration and employees. It also assisted in reaching the goal of increasing participation in the Consumer Driven Health Plan. Therefore, the program was continued to this date. So as we discussed in the previous slide, due in part of the elimination of the Buy-Up in combination with the county's HSA contribution for Plan Year twenty twenty, the county experienced a dramatic shift to the High Deductible Plan and enrollment in the Health Savings Account. However, it did result in a one point one million reduction from our risk fund in the month of January of twenty twenty, which is a significant hint to our fund. Therefore, we have prepared several HSA contribution options for the court to consider during the budget sessions and for twenty twenty medical plan year. So option one is to continue with the twelve hundred dollar contribution that has an estimate impact of one point two million. Option two is to contribute nine hundred dollars with an estimate impact of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. Option three, which is to contribute six hundred dollars with an estimate impact of... Uh, option three, which is to contribute six-hundred dollars with an estimate impact of, um, little over six-hundred-thousand dollars. Option four, to contribute three-hundred dollars, and that has an estimated, uh, impact of a little over three-hundred-thousand dollars. And of course, option five would be no contribution. So, um, at this time, eh, the, the recommendation from staff and the risk pool board would be to reduce the incent- incentive by fifty percent for plan year twenty twenty-one, which is the six-hundred-dollar level. And if necessary, reduce to the three, three-hundred-dollar level for plan year twenty twenty-one. And if necessary, uh, eliminate for plan year twenty twenty-three. With that, I will be handing it over to our health consultant, uh, Hub, Senior Vice President Randy McGrath, who will be going over the average claims, contributions versus net expenses, local peer, uh, premium com- comparisons, and the forecast. Randy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Vinny. Uh, let's see, I wait for the slide to come up in, uh, good morning, Commissioner. I'm sorry, Judge and Commissioners. So, uh, basically, uh, as Veronese was describing, currently, the county contributed twelve-hundred dollars. We're gonna cut that in half. On what we're seeing right now is our trend lines, and we do receive weekly updates from the Auditor's Office, and thank you to them, they give us some very timely information, including this morning during the meeting. What we're looking at here on the chart are some trend lines, and of course, it's like most charts, uh, anything that as it moves from left to right across the screen and goes up is not necessarily a good sign. In our current year, our plan year is shown in the upper-left-hand corner, the blue line with the triangles. And so you can see the pressure on the plan in terms of average cost per member per month has leveled off over the last several months. And as it, uh, approaches, this is a trailing twelve-month moving average. And you can see last year, we had a significant jump in the line, and as we approached that line, that'll be the twelve, uh, month mark. And we should start to see some favorable, uh, results as a result of that. We did have a risk pool board meeting, uh, yesterday, and there is some additional information that wasn't ready at the time this presentation was made. But that trend line does continue to stay, uh, stable all the way through the month of April. And if we can go to the next slide, please. This is a slide that compares revenues and expenses. On the left-hand side of the chart is a twelve-month moving average, and on the right-hand side is a six-month moving average. So again, you can see, uh, in the current plan year, and it's primarily due to the shift in enrollment into the consumer-driven health plan. As employees have left the buy-up plan and migrated into either the core plan or the consumer-driven health plan, the cost of their claims expenses has declined a little bit, not as much as we would have hoped. Uh, but there've been some risk situations developing inside of the plan. The good news is, as we track and monitor claims related to COVID expenses, uh, they are fairly insignificant at that, at this time, which is great for the county. We've got some other county clients, uh, especially in the corrections departments, where they're seeing, uh, higher risk of an, or higher rate of infection. And County of El Paso does not seem to be experiencing that, so that's, uh, congratulations to the Sheriff's Department. On our next slide, this is a comparison that we've seen in some prior presentations with the court as you approach your budget season. And it compares payroll deductions on a monthly basis between the County of El Paso with the city, the El Paso School District, and the Alleda, a state-independent school district. We've got some illustrative numbers, uh, plugged in for twenty twenty-one. Those numbers won't finalize until we get a little bit closer, uh, to the actual uh, time that we need to finalize your budget, but we wanted to give you, uh, a good snapshot of what to expect going forward in the future. And this would reflect, uh, possible changes in payroll deductions for employe- employees uh, beginning January twenty twenty-one compared to where they are the, in this current year. And our next slide, please. So this is our forecast page, uh, that we use for, uh, projecting expenses into the plan year twenty twenty-one. And of course, everybody knows your fiscal year cycles October through September. The most important takeaway from this slide is in the lower-right-hand corner. And there've been discussions in the past too over whether, and currently, this, the county's practice is to target a ninety-day claims-paying capability. And as, uh, Veronese covered, I was offline for a little bit, but the Risk Pool Board recommended, uh, changing our funding strategy to meet uh, the minimum target established by the local government code of sixty days. So that would be kind of where we're headed, but you can see, in order to keep the plan solvent or financial, or fiscal, or prudently fiscally, uh, funded, the increase for a ninety-day target would be about twenty-two-point-eight-percent increase in funding. That would apply to both the county's share of the contributions as well as employees and retirees share the con- uh, contributions. And if we target the sixty-day, uh, threshold, fifteen-point-four-three-percent would be the impact there. And I believe that's pretty much it for my portion, right?
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
If we move on to the next slide, it summarizes the, the percentages that Randy was discussing. Um, so currently, there is no recommendation on dental rate changes for plan year twenty twenty-one. However, under the medical, uh, the proposed conservative rate premium increases, uh, recommendations like Randy stated, uh, based on the current data is twenty-two-point-eight-two-percent. Should the court's desire be to maintain at the ninety-day level or fifteen-point-four-three-percent to maintain at the sixty-day level. As of our mid-year estimates, the ninety-day level would be an estimate budget impact of about two-point-five-million. And the sixty-day level, um, is an estimate, a budget impact of one-point-eight-million. And so this concludes the medical plan presentation. Staff is prepared to answer any questions the court may have. We are seeking direction from the court before we finalize for the budget, uh, sessions. And so we're asking the court if they would like for us to proceed as we have presented today.
Thank you, Vinny. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any comments?
Judge.
Mr. Leo?
Yes, sir, thank you, Veronese. Uh, in looking at the numbers, it would seem to me, even though it probably is not gonna be the most popular thing to do, is to remove the, uh, let me go back to one of your first slides indicated that if we were to remove the, uh, incentive, uh, which we're talking about, not, not only cutting it in half, uh, doing away with it for this year, next year, uh, where would that leave us at the end of the year?
Great question. Um, let me refer that, that over to our, our numbers expertise, uh, Randy. Um, I know that if we, in, in the forecast, we did, um, implement this, the six-hundred-dollar HSA contribution. Um, but if we did away with the contribution amount, um, the percentage would be lower. Um, so I don't know, Randy, if you have, um, what that estimate would be if we had no contribution.
I will have it in just a few seconds.
Thank you. And by the way, I don't know what you did with Randy, but mysterious man, uh, thank you for your answers.
Let's see. Well, I apologize, it's gonna take a little bit extra time, uh, for me to come up with that. My guess is that it would be, instead of a fifteen-percent increase, somewhere around thirteen and a half on the sixty-day threshold. And the ninety-day increase would be in the neighborhood of about twenty percent.
Okay, thank you. So apparently, it, it does make a dent in, in the cost.
Yes, sir. It is, uh, I know your employees, your employees value that, uh, incentive and uh, it, it is one of the things that helps attract people into that plan. In the past, in the early stages when we implemented the plan in twenty sixteen, there was not a whole lot of participation in the consumer-driven health plan. As you started to put some seed money in there, then that got the attention there. So going to zero could result in some people migrating back to the core plan, which of course is, it's their decision on how they want to manage their own personal health budget. I would think that if there was some way to keep some contribution in there, then that would continue to, uh, at least keep people in the plan or attract more people into the plan in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. You're welcome. Betsy, you wanna wrap it up for us and see what we need to do here?
Yes, sir. So right now, based on the presentation, what we're proposing is that we include in the budget the funding to meet the sixty-day, uh, reserve uh, policy. If the court would like to, for us to do something different, we'd like that feedback now. Um, and on the, on the contribution towards the, uh, consumer-driven health plan, that really is part of an effort. It's one of those things you pay for now to save later. Because as you saw back on those trend lines, the, the core plan is going to cost more in claims over time than the consumer-driven plan will. So by upfronting with that incentive now, you're driving more people to a plan that will cost us less into the future. And so it, it's, i- it's just really important to, to keep that in mind as you consider whether or not we should continue to incentivize. This is a reduction of half of the amount that, that they used to receive as an incentive into going into that plan. And the real intention of that incentive is not necessarily an incentive as much as it is to help our employees build up a fund to help them meet the deductible under that plan, which it's a very high-deductible plan. So that if they do have a medical emergency in the future, they have funding to help pay that, and it doesn't put them into an economic hardship. So, uh, just would ask the court's favorable consideration to allow us to proceed. Um, we will continue, you know, as you know, you have a risk pool board that is very diligent. We have a team that's monitoring this very closely. And in my time here at the county, we've gone through this a, a couple times before, where we've seen a significant decline in risk pool revenue. And, and over time, we're able to build it back up. Um, or I should say, a, a decline in the, in the balance of the risk pool fund. But we'd ask for your favorable, um, support for us to move forward with working towards maintaining that sixty-day required, um, balance.
So, so in essence, let's see, it, the incentive offsets, uh, our cost. So we, we can look at it as a, as a cost by itself, uh, because it is helping us have a plan that's cheaper. So you have to, one thing offsets the other, but, uh, Commissioner Stout, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I, um, I think we need to be, be careful about being shortsighted when it comes to the, the incentive and, and understand that, that it's an investment, it's an investment now that's, that's gonna help us a lot later, and, and if we can keep it, um, you know, uh, I, I feel like, uh, we should, we should look at it, but I, but I do think that, um, you know, we, we need to look at this in the whole context of the budget itself instead of deciding to cut something today without understanding what the, what the rest of the budget has, um, has in it. And so, I mean, the, I, I would recommend that we, we, we still remain with our options open uh, uh, and, and we make that decision a- as a, uh, as part of the context of, 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 of budgeting process.
And, and Commissioner Stout, I agree with you. I just wanted more options. I wanted all the information. It's not about being short-sto- cited. I just wanted to make sure we had all the options in front of us, but I agree with you. Sometimes we have to spend them out a little bit to save a lot.
That's correct. Thank you. So can you do that, uh, or Sam or?
Yes, sir.
Melissa, do you just keep those options open for us instead of zeroing in? Uh, I think it's a good suggestion from Commissioner Stout that, that we do look at it in terms of the entire budget and not zero in at this point when we're looking at it, uh, you know, sort of isolated from everything else.
This, this just gives us, Judge, thank you, and that's exactly what we'll do. This just gives us the parameters to start forming the budget that we'll bring forward for further discussion um, in, uh, over the next six to eight weeks.
Well, thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation. Excellent job, Melissa, and, and Sam. A great presentation. It's always, uh, good to have, uh, an understanding as we move there instead of trying to understand everything at the time of budget, so these are very helpful opportunities.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
Before we close this item, um, I just wanted to mention, uh, I, I was, had a conversation with Vede this week, and we had the UTEP students present today, and you talked about them being our best and brightest. She actually started with us as a UTEP student as an intern and is just, uh, a leader. She'll have my job someday or whatever job she wants. So, thank you, Vede.
Thank you, Betsy. Thank you.
Great compliment, Vede. Thank you very much, and thank you for the two, Randy and, um, Roxanne. Thank you very much for, for participating and, and your time to, to get us going in the right direction, uh, headed towards a budget. Thank you.
Caesar? Item number seven, receive a presentation summarizing fiscal year two thousand nineteen El Paso County grant awards.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Wally Hargrove with the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. As we've started doing last fiscal year, we have our annual update on our grant overview. Uh, with that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Erica Ortega, who was our senior grant analyst, was prepared today's presentation along with our grant team. Uh, that includes Isabel Hernandez and, uh, and Letty as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Erica.
Thank you, Ollie. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Um, today, so real quick, before we get the PowerPoint started, um, I just want to say a little bit about grants administration and, and what we do. So our division does focus on applying for new grant programs during each fiscal year. Um, but we also focus on completing renewal applications, um, each year. And our team also assists departments with programmatic reporting requirements throughout the grant period. Um, and then I just kind of wanted to do a comparison with the Grants Division in the County Auditor's Office. So this Grants Division focuses solely on financials after the grant award. So just to give you a little bit of background with, with how we're each a little bit different. In terms of, um, general activities, um, and this is before our first slide, uh, for FY nineteen, I wanted to let you know that twenty-five grants began during FY nineteen. Um, and we had seventy-one grant applications, which is a very large volume. I, I think I'm really proud of our team. Um, seventy-one grant applications were submitted, uh, by the county, uh, during FY nineteen. So, okay, well, I'm, with that being said, I'm going to turn off my camera, and that way we can focus on the presentation. I will be back on once we conclude the presentation to answer any questions you may have. Okay, if we can go to the next slide. Alrighty, so I wanted to start off with, um, basically going over the fiscal years. Just a comparison of a few years prior to two thousand nineteen. Um, if we look back to two thousand sixteen, we'll see, um, about thirteen million. It, it decreased a little bit for federal awards, uh, then went back up. So the chart does offer a four-year comparison for the grant awards, and I'll, I'll let you take a look at that. Hopefully, you can see the numbers clearly. Um, over the last two fiscal years, we have seen over a ten-percent growth per year, which is great. Um, and so hopefully, over the next few years, we hope to keep this trend. Uh, but just please remember that this is based off of dollars for reimbursement. Um, so at the end of the year, our auditors help us keep track of what we are being reimbursed for. Um, and so it doesn't necessarily reflect the awards at the county. And so it doesn't necessarily reflect the awards that the county has received during FY nineteen. And so, for example, grants that we apply for during FY nineteen typically all begin in FY twenty. Okay, next slide, please. So this is can you all see that? Okay, this is a chart of funding. I did want to provide a breakdown. So from our last chart that that talked about our federal awards, our state awards, and then gave a total, now I'm just going into a breakdown of, okay, what is our federal funding comprised of? We did receive seventeen point three million dollars in federal funding. And if you look at the pie chart, you'll notice that the HEITA grant under the executive office of the president is close to a third of all federal funds. And the HEITA grant is a task force of local, state, and federal agencies that combat the manufacture, transportation, distribution, and selling of illegal drugs. So I wanted to give you an idea of what type of grant that is. The Department of Agriculture is not too far behind with twenty two percent. And then, of course, we see a Department of Transportation and Department of Justice, which also make up a significant percentage of federal funds for county programs in FY nineteen. So you'll see others, and you'll see Health and Human Services, Homeland Security, a various breakdown of federal funding. Next slide, please. Okay, now on to state funding. So the county did receive nine point nine million in state funding through reimbursements in FY nineteen. You'll see that the Texas Juvenile Justice Department brought in forty two percent of the grant funding at the state level. And again, this is this is funding for juvenile probation. And you'll see that the Office of the Governor makes up twenty five percent of our grants, which represents our public safety, homeland security grants, anything that's law enforcement related, those grants will cover. We do have the Task Force on Indigent Defense at fifteen percent of our state grants. And then, of course, we have Texas dot and Texas Veterans Commission at five percent. So other agencies in the pie chart consist of Commission on Environmental Quality, Council on Family Violence. You'll see sometimes we do get grants from different nonprofit organizations at the state level or local level. And we also have Comptroller Public Accounts, which is a state agency. And so just wanted to to give you a little background on what other is comprised of. So and I just want to let you all know with state funding, some of the state funding is pass through funding that has originated at the federal level, while some is strictly state funding that derives at the state level and then passed through to local organizations. Okay, next slide, please. Alrighty, so this before, I did want to give a breakdown, of course, how the county is doing year to year. I also wanted to include a slide where we compare El Paso County to a few other counties that are comparable in population throughout Texas. And so it was also based on which financial reports are available in order to compare grant funding and and just a single audit every year, we need to have those numbers to be able to compare. So we do have four other counties, Bear, Travis, Collin, and Denton County. And you'll see that their populations are larger than El Paso. So we're the smallest out of this group. And I wanted to let you know that in we were comparing federal awards, state awards in this chart, and of course, the total for FY nineteen. But I do want to tell you that this chart is comparing apples to oranges. But it gives us a general sense of where the county compares to other larger Texas counties. And and I do want to point out that these counties have very different characteristics. So it would be hard to compare success with the amount of grant funding, but it gives us a general idea. So when we look at factors that that may either help or hinder grant funding, we have to look at departments, services offered by each county. Some counties do offer more services to the public. Therefore, they may receive more grant funding from certain state or federal agencies. We also look at the staffing, the ability to apply for grants. Some departments, I'm sure, are smaller, some are bigger, some have more employees, some have less. We also need to consider grant submittals without award. And so sometimes we submit plenty of grants and sometimes we don't get awarded. So we need to also consider that. There's definitely competitiveness with grants and, of course, limited availability of grant funding. So state agencies and federal agencies cannot fund all applicants that have submitted an application. The formula funding I didn't want to mention, because this is very important when it comes to grants at the local level. So in most cases, formula funding can mean more funding for higher populated counties. But sometimes that's not the case. What I want to say is that El Paso County has probably been applying for a significant amount of discretionary funding in addition to formula funding. Based on the numbers, you'll see that El Paso County is doing very, very well with federal awards and state awards. And and we receive, gosh, more state awards than any other county. So you'll see just that that we're doing great in terms of federal awards. We're we're second in line. So and and that speaks very highly to the county, the motivation that the different programs have to apply for for grant funding. So and again, I do want to say that grant programs are very specific with eligibility, program initiatives. And these programs may be targeted more towards sometimes it's a county that that falls in line with what El Paso County has to offer. Or sometimes it's other counties in Texas. And so sometimes grants tend to focus on data that will require certain demographics, minority populations, poverty levels, income levels, rural conditions, the rate of population growth, crime levels, geography. So you kind of get my idea of there are so many factors in terms of applying for the right grant. But overall, I think El Paso County is keeping up with larger counties. So in a general sense, I think that we're doing great. I'm I'm really happy with these numbers. And of course, just comparing ourselves in the past fiscal years, we've been doing great. So yeah, next slide, please. Alrighty. So now that we've kind of looked at it and and it kind of went into some of this earlier, but I wanted to go into county strengths and areas of opportunity for strictly the federal awards when we compared to other counties. So I do want to say that El Paso is the only county with a HEITA grant. And of course, that was the grant that focused on drug trafficking and distribution. We did receive the highest dollar amount in agriculture funding. And we did receive more than double in other counties in homeland security as well as transportation funding. In terms of areas of opportunity, I think with federal awards, obviously, the you'll see the last bullet on this slide, which I think is very important, is the twenty twenty census. So when the when each census comes out, that definitely impacts funding that comes out at the state level and federal level. And so this will be so important. So I really do hope that the census that we have as many participants as possible. Also, human trafficking grants. So I've noticed that the federal the federal government has a lot of human trafficking grants that have been released in the past year or so. And this is becoming a very, very big topic and issue. And so I think that that's something that we can build on and focus on. I know the District Attorney's Office has added a human trafficking component to their border prosecution unit grant. And so I think if we continue to grow on that, that'll be great. In terms of economic development grants, I think we can grow in that area. And I'm I'm happy that we're working with Andrea and her team to really look at different grants that the county is eligible for. And if we are not eligible for that, maybe we can try and encourage other organizations to apply for these for these grants. So I just wanted to say Travis County was the only county with an energy grant in FY nineteen. So perhaps that is something that the county can look into. You know, depending on, and again, all of these things also rely on our strategic plan and our goals. So sometimes our priorities will shift and we adjust with our grants and what we're applying for and what our focus and our needs are. Next slide, please. Alrighty, now that we've compared the federal awards, we have state awards. So in compare comparing El Paso County with these other four counties, I think state awards, we really stand out. I'm really excited and happy about this. So we received the highest amount of state funding in any of these counties. And again, these counties are much larger than El Paso. We did receive fifteen state agency grants, while other counties received grants from ten state agencies or less. So we're really diversifying our grants and really looking at different opportunities and making sure that we kind of have a nice spread of grants. We did receive more funding than any other counties from the governor's office and the Texas Veterans Commission, which is great. And we are the only county that received funding from the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas Juvenile Justice Department, and Texas Department of Criminal Justice. So areas of opportunity, I did want to mention that we are seeking grants from Texas Parks and Wildlife to to really implement more projects for local parks, for our communities, different areas of improvement. And so I did want to say that we do have two grants coming up for Texas Parks and Wildlife. And we're continuing to keep an eye out for those types of grants. And so Veronica's been very interactive with the Grants Administration Division in telling us and expressing what she is interested in and what what different communities need within the county. So the governor's office, I did want to discuss that. The governor's office, they continue to release new and innovative grant programs that I think the county can really benefit from. And so I know that the governor's office does research. They do try and fill the gaps at local levels and provide the needed funding for local governments based on what is going on right now. Maybe a certain issue is is more prevalent than another at the time. And it may shift back. But I think the governor's office is always a great asset and and resource that we can use for our grants. And then, of course, with federal funding, it's it's exactly the same. With with state funding, twenty twenty census, of course, is a big factor. So I hope that El Paso County really, really tries to encourage their friends and family to complete the census as this will make a huge impact on the grant funding that we may receive, whether it's discretionary funding or formula funding. Okay, next slide. So this is a chart. I'm not going to go over everything that is in the chart, but I did want to provide a few federal award highlights. The funding amount you'll see on the right hand column. I do want to tell you that that's not the exact grant award for the program that you see in the corresponding row. But rather, it's the amount that was received by the the grantor agency during FY nineteen. So some of these grants are perhaps more than one year. And for example, let's look at the Tiger Discretionary Program. I'm not sure if this is a one year program or not, but let's say if it's a two year program and maybe at three hundred thousand in total for the award, this is what we requested in FY nineteen, which is that one hundred twenty two thousand four hundred sixty five dollars. So this always also gives you a an overview of different types of programs we have. So you'll see different county departments, the sheriff's office, the county attorney. We have a district court, the juvenile probation department. So we do have a just various grants involved. I'm sorry, various departments involved in applying for grants and awarded grants. And then, of course, the purpose of the grants, it's all different. We have food, nutrition, distribution. We have we have promoting safe and stable families, reducing drug trafficking. So we have so many different means for grants. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so this is is another slide that is similar to the previous. This is focused on state award highlights. And again, if you look at the right column, again, that is not the grant award, but it's the amount that was received in reimbursements during FY nineteen. So so you'll see, as you take a look at this, you'll see the grants are very different in nature. You'll see we have different departments, Public Defender, Public Works, Sheriff's Office, District Attorney. I did mention earlier that the district attorney had a border prosecution unit grant that was adding a human trafficking element to the grant. So I did want to emphasize that. And and really, I think that's something that we can capitalize on in the future and and build on human trafficking. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this slide is just an overview of of match funding for grants. You'll see that in-kind match is close to six hundred thousand. In-kind match can consist of volunteer hours, third party organizations, any professional services that are donated from third parties to the county. Cash match is the county funds that have been transferred from match accounts to grant accounts to be used throughout the grant period in FY nineteen. But I did want to emphasize that the total grant expenditures, including match funds for FY nineteen was twenty nine point six million. So the twenty nine point six million includes grant salaries and benefits and operating expenses for grants. Okay, next slide. Okay. So a little bit on grant personnel in FY nineteen, we had one hundred and nineteen employees fully or partially funded by grants. And the county spent twelve point nine million on salaries and benefits in FY nineteen. So what is great is that the grants are paying for for much more in salaries and benefits versus what the county has actually spent. And then, since we are going through the pandemic, I did want to make note that HR is currently in the process of reviewing all the grant funded positions and will be prepared to discuss them with the court. Should funding be reduced or cut due to the pandemic circumstances? Okay, next slide. Okay, so now I'd like to shift gears to our current fiscal year, twenty twenty. So this slide helps gauge annual volume of grants applied for and activities. The county currently has eighty five active grants and thirty three grants that began this fiscal year. So far, I do want to note fifty one applications have been submitted. And this is probably this PowerPoint was prepared a few weeks ago. And so I think we've probably added ten or so since then. So hopefully, we'll continue to apply and then get that number up. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this this pie chart shows the federal and state awards to date. So we're kind of shifting gears again, because whereas before I told you what our reimbursements were, these are actual awards that have come in. So this is just the sum of of grants that began in FY twenty twenty and the total dollar amount assigned to these grants. So it doesn't necessarily mean we will be receiving all this money during FY twenty. So I do want to note state monies include grants from the Office of the the Governor for August the third for the Walmart shooting. These grants were for recovery efforts and they're still active, including the Family Resiliency Center, the Victims of Crime Act Grant currently active, and that is being managed by the District Attorney's Office. And then we have a medical examiner grant and we have a law enforcement grant. So we have all these different grants that have really helped us come back from August the third and and really try and get the county back on its feet from any funding that we used at that time. Okay, next slide, please. Alrighty, so this is my last slide, and I just wanted to note a few plans for next fiscal year. I think I I would like the Grants Administration to vision to plan to meet with you all and your staff and really gauge community needs and discuss the county's strategic plan and discuss how policy may affect the county's grant interests and funding needs. But then at the end of the day, tie everything back to, again, the county's strategic plan and and really get any ideas from you all, if you all have any suggestions in terms of where we should seek grants. But but yes, I do want to do that to support the strategic plan and the goals of the plan. I also wanted to let you all know that we are planning for the design of a grants database with ITD. And so I do want to focus more on data gathering and trends to really see where we can focus, where were the needs, where to work, can we find improvements in our different programs? And and just streamline things with our own division. So really just see where improvements are needed. I also want to determine where finances are most needed and really tap into grants that that may help address this. Also, maybe conduct surveys, needs assessments, and this could be either internally, externally for county staff or with county communities. I know a few years ago, we had implemented grants training. We have stopped that for now, but we would like to get back into a grants training and really improve that that training process and what we're really offering to our county departments. I think the easier we make it for our departments, the better they will feel comfortable approaching us and and seeking new grant programs and and really be up for that challenge. One last thing is I would like to reach out to different county departments and maybe host interactive planning sessions similar to what Wally and his budget team does. And and really just to gauge the needs and interests of of the county departments to then consolidate that into what the strategic plans are, maybe connect certain departments that have similar interests to have them partner. maybe connect certain departments that have similar interests to have them partner up on different grant programs and initiatives. And so that is my goal, is to really just put Grants Administration out there, streamline our process, encourage participation and learning about grants, and hopefully that'll help us improve our grant awards and applications that are being submitted. Well, that concludes my presentation. Thank you. If you all have any comments or questions, please feel free to ask.
Well, Erica, I am very pleased and thank you for everything that you've done since you came on board. And I also get a lot of comments from the community of looking at you and your department and your team as a resource for them. And so I really appreciate that. We've always wanted to be that role model and be able to help organizations, you know, be able to benchmark with us or best practices. But as you could see, I mean, the variation is just unbelievable, the support you give our budget grants. And, you know, we're always very much aware and appreciative of how grants helps us reduce our cost and what an impact it has. And so your approach and research and trying to figure out where the grants are and how we partner up with different organizations is really a great contributor. And so I thank you for the work that you've done. And thank you for sort of, you know, getting us to understand the process and how it works. And I think the training for us as well, to understand the process and how we go forth and then connecting, you know, what's available with, you know, before the state economic development, we had no real relationship and no contact. We didn't know what was out there. And you mentioned the federal. You know, what can we do from that standpoint? So thank you very much for your team. The presentation was excellent. And then I'll just see if the commissioners have any thoughts or comments or questions.
Great, thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Erica.
Judge Commissioner Wally from County of Justice Policy. One thing I'd just like to add on there is...
Thank you, Wally.
Like the UTEP students, like the UTEP students you mentioned earlier, Erica is someone who was born and raised in El Paso, left to seek other opportunity. And we poached her back from the state Capitol and brought her back from the state offices back to El Paso. And so she's leading a great team with Isabel and Letty, but have also challenged them to help us develop some good scorecards on how to present to the court the clients that we serve and the outcomes of the grants that we currently have. Because as these resources are being looked for by more and more agencies and are being scrutinized and tightened up or spread even thinner, we will have circumstances in the future that will result in either grant reductions or grant losses. So we are working closely with county administration and our human resource team as well. And this year, one of the new proposals we're going to present with the budget is that we, rather than selectively picking out what we want to cover in contingencies for the possibility of loss of grants, is having a general grants contingency. So that as the court is informed of any grant reductions or eliminations that arise in the future, that we've got a pool of money that if the court considers this is a program we want to continue and the services being delivered through those grants are important enough to pick up on the general fund, we've got a general grant contingency to consider for future purposes. With that, I'll go ahead and ask for any other questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Wally. And you know, Erica, the proverbial, you hit the road running. Boy, you hit the road running when you came in here. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
So go ahead. Do I have anybody else? Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. Very well done. And thank you for keeping us abreast. These things are really important headed to budget as well. So once again, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
My pleasure, thank you.
Also, we're at the 12 o'clock mark. And I don't know, commissioners, I'm thinking just a half hour so that we could not prolong it further. Are you okay with a half-hour lunch, or would you like to stay with our 45-minute lunch that we started this Monday?
Half hour is okay with me, whatever my cohorts recommend.
Commissioner, stop.
Up till half hour is fine. Forty-five minutes is okay with me, too.
Okay, well, let's just, I know that Public Works and everyone else was very appreciative of, on Monday, that they were able to schedule lunch. And so maybe the 45 minutes would, let's just keep that since we had mentioned between that and, you know, trying to get it back at once, so we're finishing that a little later than 12. So let's do the 45-minute, and we'll see everyone back here, I believe, at 1 o'clock, I think. A little before 1 o'clock. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner's Court will recess until 1:00 PM.
Hi, this is County Judge Samaniego. The 2020 Census Count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Betas for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner Callie L. Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 census. Together and fearless we count.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048. process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food, and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Bettes for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner Carl Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 censuses. Together and fearless we come.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge Fabians Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabians Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotio Warehouse located at 191 Canotio Avenue in Canotio, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Okay, Sessar, go ahead.
Commissioners Court has reconvened into special open session. We are on item number eight of the agenda. Item number eight is to discuss and take appropriate action regarding the fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 budget and fiscal overview.
You're muted, Wally.
Thank you, team. Mr. Stout-
We'll also receive presentations from agencies that we have provide outside funding to.
Can I, while I just wanted to ask you, I've asked for our August on the 4th, we'll be having our Commissioners Court instead of on August 3rd. Just, I just want to make sure it doesn't mess up with your, with your schedule. We know it's going to be a very important day and lot of actions and things that are happening. And I didn't want to be, you know, trying to come back and forth from Commissioners Court. So I've asked, I've asked Ramon to reach out to Betsy and everyone else to see if we could have it on Tuesday. So just so this doesn't mess up with your, your programming.
Good, thank you for the heads up, Judge. I'll, I'll adjust that schedule accordingly and I'll also reach out to UMC as well. We may begin our hearings a lot on the 5th instead of the 4th with UMC, but I'll, I'll work that out with the team over at the hospital. And then lastly, the third week of August, if necessary, we'll have another set of hearings with the UMC Board and the Commissioners Court. Next slide, please. So this week we received our latest revenue estimates from the county auditor. These estimates were as of June of 2020. As a reminder, our pre-COVID estimates were right at $309 million, a nine million, a nine million or 3% increase. However, post-COVID, we've had some significant revisions to that revenue estimate. And currently we will have a FY 21 beginning revenue estimate of $301.5 million. There are a number of areas that are still subject to change. This is probably the most fluid budget year we'll ever go through as we are still in the, in the midst of this pandemic. But areas that are subject to change in the future will be property taxes, your number one revenue source. We anticipate receiving the top property tax rolls from Central Appraisal District on July 25th. We are receiving those roll estimates every couple of weeks and I've been sending those to Ms. Keller to include in the weekly, in the weekly highlights. Don't anticipate any major changes from here forward on the 2020 tax rate calculation or the 2020 tax year. But we have been advised we're likely to hear a spike in increased property valuation challenges that will have a bigger impact in tax year 2021. Your second largest revenue source is sales tax. You received a highlight from Ms. Keller as well. The last two months, we've had just under a million dollars decrease in our sales tax from the prior year, about a half million dollars per month, 11% this month and 13% last month. So as these next 60 days move forward before dolphing the budget, we'll be looking at that sales tax estimate. And Mr. Dion and his staff have taken that estimate and modeled that out for the next 18 to 24 months as it gradual builds over time changes. In discussions we've had as recently as yesterday, they will look at revising their model as these estimates or actual sales tax revenue receipts are received from the state comptroller. And I would also like to thank Mr. Dion and his staff for, for their assistance and, and going back and forth and working on these revenue estimates and fund balance estimates over the last few months. Your third largest area of revenue for the County of El Paso is charges for services. This is one of the biggest areas that we'll have an estimating, estimation challenge on because it is subject to the business volume impacts resulted from COVID-19 and also the uncertainty of a potential second wave. The largest revenue source you have under your charges for services is your contract with the US Marshals Office. We are, we started the negotiations process with the US Marshals at the end of 2019. We had a rapid exchange of information in the early part of this year, January and February, but with the onset of COVID, everything came to a standstill for the last six to eight weeks. And we have resumed that negotiation process now. They've asked the last couple of questions and we anticipate that rate proposal to be presented to management at the US Marshals and expect to hear a rate offer in the very near future. As soon as we receive that rate offer, we'll of course inform county administration and include that in, in future highlights for the court's consideration. Once we actually get a rate offer, then it'll be about a 30 or 45 day process to consummate a finalization of that rate. And I would anticipate that new rate would certainly go into effect by the beginning of the fiscal year. So that could be included in the future revenue estimates. If you'll go to the next slide, please. So this table will provide you with an overview of our historical revenue, expenses and fund balance. And the projections going into the future. This will certainly probably be one of the most challenging estimating periods we've had or encountered in the past three decades. Your top shaded area are the county's revenues running back to 2014. The most recent estimate of where those revenues are going to finish, a little bit to the right of center of that chart, fiscal year 2020 estimate. And then moving forward, going out to fiscal year 2024, estimates running into the future. I will qualify that your fiscal year 20 estimate is the review by the county auditor and myself of where we think we're going to finish this year's revenues at 200 and just under $295 million. The fiscal year 21 estimate, just to the right of that, or the 302 million is a roundup of 301.5 million. That is the currently, the current revenue estimate that is yet to be certified for the auditor for inclusion or balancing your fiscal year 21 budget. Thereafter, moving 2022 and forward, those are my numbers under the assumption that we grow in the vicinity of 2.5% a year. I don't feel that's an unreasonable estimate even under the current circumstances. As this, majority of this accounts for normal property growth, we typically see about three quarters of a billion dollars in property growth on an annual basis and recognize that revenue growing forward. This also assumes that we resume our return to operations and grow back to a state of normality over the next 24 months. Your second shaded area in the center of this table are the expenses. They're highlighted and read on the presentation before you. Those expenses run back to 2014. The expense estimation for fiscal year 20, right there, just a little bit right of the center is at $300 million. I've worked with the auditor's office very closely over the last few days on this estimated expenditure. Thereafter, moving forward for fiscal year 2021 and out to the right to fiscal year 2024 is a model that is built under the assumption that if we can manage our future expense growth to, to the vicinity of 2%, you'll see that over the next four years, we can come close to the alignment of revenues targeting or being equal to those expenditures. That is, remains to be a top goal and priority for the County of El Paso. And we want to do everything we do to try and model future year budgets with a basis of aligning those two sources. The last portion of the, of the table is at the bottom is, represents the fund balance. It begins highlighted in green and transitions over to red. And the reason I've transitioned that from green to red is for fiscal years 2014 through fiscal years 2019, that green represents a growth in fund balance. However, fiscal year 20 and moving forward represents a small amount of consumption of that fund balance. Next slide, please. So this is just a line graph representation of the data presented to you on the former, on the former graph. And of course, this will, this, the priority here is, is to align that overall goal and priority of having revenues and expenses be, become equal to one another. So as you see the far top right tip where the blue and the purple lines intersect under this model, if we can grow our revenues at 2.5% and maintain our expense growth close to 2%, we would have hopes of aligning revenues and expenses at 325 million and then leveling off our fund balance at that $77 million mark, which would meet our 90 days operating capital needs and, and keep the county in, in strong or better financial condition. Next slide, please. So we started this process a couple of years ago at the, at the suggestion and recommendation of our county administrator. And this is pretty much your budget register. As you see with fiscal year 2020, we began the year with $92 million in reserves. We expect to finish the year somewhere in the area of $294 million in revenues. Expenditures at about $300 million when you take and just do the math straight down the bottom. We anticipate ending up somewhere in the $87 million mark for fund balance for this fiscal year. This does take into account expenditure changes, new expenditure estimates and projections through September 30. And with the impacts of COVID-19 and this model will be modified and updated every 30 days as we close a fiscal month and recognize our new significant revenue sources. But you will, if you were to compare this to the draft version we had out there as recently as four weeks ago, it's about a $10 million difference from the five, $10 million favorable difference from the prior graphs based off of revenue trend changes and also action taken by the court and your county departments. On the column on the right, it starts with the $87 million we anticipate ending fiscal year 2020 with. Our revenue estimate at 301.5 million rounded to 302. If we can manage those expenses with a 2% or less growth, we'd have, have about $306 million in expenses and leave the ending 2021 fund balance in the area of $82 million. Next slide, please. So new appropriations that we always take under consideration as we're developing the budget are things that we know are somewhat out of our control to a great extent for annual increases. Our utilities, electric, gas and water generally have increases every year, so we account for those in the budget. And then we have a number of contracts that have contractual increases on an annual basis. Some of those areas are in the area of IT software and hardware, our jail healthcare costs, our jail food cost, professional contract for services such as lobbying, our appraisal services. You know, for the first time ever, you saw the appraisal district budget that we sent you in a highlight a couple of weeks ago. Probably for the first time in about a decade, the central appraisal budget did not increase. However, statutorily, as those budgets are prorated out to all of the participating tax and entities, which is just under 40 taxing entities in El Paso County, how we pay that budget, agency by agency is prorata based off of property value. And currently, El Paso County's property values changed at a greater rate than other taxing entities' property values. So our share of the central appraisal district budget actually went up by just under $200,000, even though the budget remained flat to our benefit. That's because our, our property values are increasing at a greater rate in the external areas of El Paso County. We also have to take into account our collective bargaining agreement and that this year will move at about $2.2 million or six tenths of 1% of the budget. And then impacts for temporary or interim wages resulting from changes we've done with our sick leave donation and sick leave pool process. The latter part on there is just that on an annual basis, we'll always account for the strategic initiatives and direction we receive from the court. That's not intended to be an all inclusive list, but we always take into account the county's strategic plan and the goals. We would ask, however, that if you have any specific areas that you would like us to focus on, if you would, please reach out to Ms. Keller or myself so that we make sure we include that and take that into consideration as we're wrapping up the development of the budget. Ms. Keller, anything you want to add around there?
No, sir, thank you.
Great, next slide, please. So as we started the 2021 budget process, we started it, paused it and then amended what we instructed departments to do. We started with a hard hold the line and we're still maintaining the hard hold the line. However, we asked the departments to look at their operating budgets and all of the areas that are eligible to be reduced as due a 5% reduction on those operating budgets. We're looking at our staffing to look at the potential need in the future to reduce spending or budget growth. We need to look at a balance between any personnel impacts and the potential that we need to impose a hiring freeze. And lastly, if we need to consider as a result of our economic, economic circumstances, if we do go through a second wave and that has an impact to operations and an impact to the volume of activity that the county recognizes and receives revenue from, then we may have to look at the consideration of a furlough somewhere as, as little as no furlough to maybe worst case scenario as high as 10%. That, that rate hasn't been determined yet because as I mentioned, this will be somewhat fluid of a budget process this year as the next 30, 60 and 90 days come upon us and we do estimates on the latest trends. And also, we want to have the ability that if there is a second wave, if the county needs to consider taking any remedial, remedial action to affect the budget and affect our spending, I will remind you that our largest area of operating cost are personnel and those operating costs are approximately 77 to 80% of our daily spend every year. So the, also the other thing we need to look at is our contractual or market driven increases and still take into consideration the ability to negotiate any contractual changes that can effectuate some change. Absolutely recognize any budgetary efficiencies wherever possible and then take under consideration any budget changes that are neutral or to our benefit. And then lastly, as I mentioned on the prior slide, if, if there's our areas that the court wants to, to focus on and bring to our attention for future consideration that aligns with our strategic plan, we, we want to make sure that you communicate those to us and, and as we develop, finish the development of this budget and the budget review, we'll be bringing to you the items that we recommend and, and the funding strategy for those such, such as shifting any and all eligible budgets out of our operating expense and over to the debt side. And that example I'll give you is the El Paso County Mobility Fund. We pay our, our state infrastructure bank loan from the MNO side and we can easily include that on our debt schedule. And we reviewed the, the terms of the agreement with the state infrastructure bank and that could move from the operating side of our tax rate over to the debt side of our tax rate. Lastly, we're also working closely with our financial advisor. You'll have a presentation provided to you at our July 13th meeting. And I've also asked the financial advisor to give us those market updates. Right now, as I get those weekly updates from various financial entities, the, the markets are looking for quality government debt and the rates on, on future debt and current debt right now is, is a, is the lowest in history. So if the county anticipates a need to do some infrastructure improvements and move it to the debt side of the model, we have the capacity and the market is probably the most favorable that it's ever been for that consideration to meet our infrastructure needs, our stormwater needs and et cetera. Next slide, please. So last slide that has the most meaning to it for the current fiscal year before we open it up for any discussion and feedback and turn it over to Ms. Carillo is the recommendations the court had provided to us. When you made the decision to do the court initiated reductions, that amounted to just under $5 million. Midstream in the year, departments were asked to reduce their departmental budgets by 3%. And I'm pleased to report to you that those reductions amounted to $6.1 million. They came in the, in the fashion of just under $3 million for salary savings and freezing positions. No one did a reduction in workforce and no one did any interim furloughs. It was from prior salary savings and position freezes. The departments also submitted requests to lower their operating budgets by $2.8 million. And lastly, about $330 million, $330,000 of capital budget reduction. So our target number was right at $6 million and we were successful in accomplishing a mid-year $6 million budget reduction. So this coupled with the action that the court took and our current revenue estimates helped move that fund balance needle from where it had been six weeks or almost eight weeks ago to where it stands today. And we were able to shave that off by, by close to $10 million. So that was a, a very affirmative action by the, by the Commissioners Court and I thank you for that. And I appreciate the cooperation we've received from. Next slide please. So last slide that has the most meaning to it for the current fiscal year before I open it up for any discussion and feedback and turn it over to Ms. Carrillo. Is the recommendations the court had provided to us. When you made the decision to do the court initiated reductions that amounted to just under $5 million. Midstream in the year, departments were asked to reduce their departmental budgets by 3%. And I'm pleased to report to you that those reductions amounted to $6.1 million. They came in the in the fashion of just under $3 million for salary savings and freezing positions. No one did a reduction in workforce. And no one did any interim furloughs. It was from prior salary savings and position freezes. The departments also submitted requests to lower their operating budgets by $2.8 million. And lastly, about $330,000 of capital budget reduction. So our target number was right at $6 million and we were successful in accomplishing a midyear $6 million budget reduction. So this coupled with the action that the court took. And our current revenue estimates help move that fund balance needle from where it had been six weeks or almost eight weeks ago. To where it stands today and we were able to shave that off by by close to $10 million. So that was a very affirmative action by the by the commissioner's court and I thank you for that. And I appreciate the cooperation we've received from many of them, from all the county departments. And a number of county departments, I will tell you, went above and beyond and and made all of the reductions they could that exceeded the 3% request. So they are to be commended for those efforts. And Ms. Keller, anything you'd like to add to that before I open it up for discussion and feedback?
No, thank you very much, Wally.
Okay. With that, I'll just move to the next slide, which is any discussion and feedback the court would like to have. This is basically just a preview that will provide you of our current financial situation. We'll do that every 30 days and we'll use this leading into to give you a. A tone, so to speak, of where we're going into the FY 2021 budget and prior to us presenting that to you. About seven, seven and a half weeks from now.
Wally, go ahead. Mr. Leon, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Judge. Just Wally, great presentation. And you're right, a lot of the departments went over and above. And I'd also like to mention the judiciary. They also went over and above insofar savings for the county. So our heads up, heads off to them, did a great job. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was just gonna ask you. I was gonna ask you, Wally, that what 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 keeps you up at night about our budget? What what is it that you sort of look ahead and you're concerned about? What is the, you know, maybe there's one or few things that you could talk to us about that?
So so right now, the the biggest challenge that keeps me up at night is the uncertainty of a second wave. And the somewhat unpredictability of how quickly we'll resume and get back to normal. That is, that is the number one thing right now. What doesn't keep me awake is knowing how fiscally responsible your county department heads are and your elected officials. They risen to the, I've been here for coming up 30 years and they've risen to this challenge every year and this year is no exception. So I do rest assured that when times get tough, we have a team that rises and accepts that challenge.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Stone?
Wally, can can you go back to? The slide with the with the the projections on it?
The lines, the table?
Yeah.
With the green, yes, sir.
That one, yeah, this right here, this one right here. So. What? In 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 some of the, some of the, in the projections here, we're looking at. Our our fund balance is 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 gonna be kind of on a downward slope. But, you know, I, to me, it doesn't seem as doomsday as as it could be. And 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 can you explain to me? Why that is?
So. Number one, the impacts taken, the decisions taken by the court. Immediately to reduce that budget by $5 million and defer some of the initiatives. When we had our meeting back in March. And the decisions you made and the actions you took to suspend some of our spending patterns absolutely help reduce. The severity of how sharp that could have been. Additionally, we use a good portion of our reserves to balance this budget. So our revenue estimates. That number moving forward are purely the estimated revenue estimates moving into the future and the estimated expenses. As as you'll note, the 2020 budget, even though we say we're going to spend 300 million, is $380 million. 30 million of that is your emergency reserve. So when you get down to the basics, 350 million is the operating budget. Because of attrition and normal turnover that we experience, we only spend about 95% of our personnel budget. And we spend between 89 and 90% of our operating budget as well. So with those remaining reserves. Remaining budget that we don't spend that helps us manage that reserve and preserve it going into the future. Additionally, in the years that we have grown the fund balance, the the spending stays along those patterns. But most more typically, we we see a little bit of a spike up on what Mr. Dion likes to call those, some of those uncertain revenues. We've had some significant spikes of revenues above and beyond revenue estimates such as federal prisoners. That have grown our fund balance rather significantly. But this year, in in working with Mr. Dion, he's, he took this year's certification of federal revenue estimates for fiscal year 20. He took the hardest swing at those ever, ever. And much, much to our our surprise, you know, with COVID-19, the numbers dropped off significantly. And that's having a a big impact on future, future year revenue estimates as well. So that that's one of the things that really attributes to that maintenance of the fund balance and and managing. The severity of the situation.
So so the the projections going into the future, they 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 include. What the, what a new rate from the from the US Marshals to be, to have the jail contract or they don't?
No, sir. This this projection is under the assumption we have the current rate. We requested away a rate from the federal government going from 80 to $126. We substantiated the cost and included the growth models into that rate. So this assumes that the rate does not go up. So if we do get a more favorable rate, this model will change moving that into the future.
Okay. And so. Moving forward with 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 some of your, some of your recommendations. Let me see. We don't, I I don't see. Any indication that we're looking at. In your recommended course of budget action, I don't see anything, anything there that that indicates that that you're recommending we. We we tap into the emergency fund. Can you, can you explain to us? Of those, of those reserves that we have. What, what? What percentage of that or what amount of that is actually part of the the emergency fund that we set aside?
So from a percentage, so on our year end, we have $92 million in reserves. We designated approximately 63 million of those to balance the budget. Which left the $29 million of. Emergency reserves. Any, any reserve that we don't use to balance the budget and and to the credit of Commissioner Perez for bringing this suggestion up. We budget 90% of those remaining balances not necessary to balance the budget as an emergency reserve. And we've just been doing that. This is our second year of doing the 90% reserve. We'll be going to our third year next year.
But the reason, Commissioner, your question about using those for the FY 21 budget. We, we're not, we're not ruling that out at this point. We're watching what what the next month really in the next six weeks produces. We've been talking, Wally and I have been talking about, this is going to be a year where we will recommend. A budget that's that's heavily based on contingencies. Where we, we have a budget, but we know that if if depending on what happens, we may have to cut. Or if things go better than expected. We, we would be able to rely on funds that we didn't allocate in a budget but set aside for use. And some of that may come from those reserves. So when we bring forward the budget, we will look at all those options depending on the revenue estimates we do get from the auditor to base our budget on.
Yeah, so I mean, I, okay, I mean, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. I just, I feel like. You know, we do have, you know, emergency reserves set aside for for emergencies. And and a lot of what we're dealing with right now is is we're in an emergency type situation when we're budgeting. You know, looking at at at, you know, the impacts of of COVID and 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 the lack of. You know, revenue that may, that we may see coming in, whether it's property taxes or sales taxes. And so I think that if not now, when would we, would we want to actually use that? Some of that money to, so that so that we we aren't impacting so greatly. Our personnel, I mean, I can understand hiring freeze and and looking at some other things. But when we start looking at, when we start talking about furloughing folks or, you know, even reduction in force, I I think that we need to. I think that we need to to understand that we have that emergency fund there. Available to 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 plug some of those holes as well. And so, I mean, I just want, I just want to put that out there and and. And and say that I think we should have that in mind.
And I appreciate, we appreciate hearing that because it will help us as we bring forward a budget. At this point, as we get these revenue estimates or projections from the auditor. I will tell you, it's, it's, as you said on the chart, it's not as grim as I I was originally expecting. But it is going to be something where it's a very uncertain time and it's, and I know that Edward is. Very, very conscientious of this. But as we get those estimates, we will, we'll work on the budget. We don't want to become reliant on emergency reserves for ongoing expenses.
No.
But if it will help this year for, to get through this year, we we will bring those options forward to the court.
Yeah, I think, I think we definitely need to 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 look at that.
Thank you.
Judge, this is Commissioner Robinson.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I think Wally and and the crew does a great job of of making sure that they keep it straight up for the finances. I'd be very cautious about touching reserve because of the unknown. So I I'd be very, very adamant about that, that we, let's not be happy about spending money. Particularly money that we, because we don't know what's going to happen a month from now, six months from now. If we have another wave, you know, so. Finance guy, Wally and the crew, I feel have done a great job. So while they hold on to the money, let's be careful about how we spend it and when we spend it. And particularly, we talk about touching the reserve. We have not talked about furloughing anybody at this point in time. So while do you anticipate, basically, do you anticipate? That we will get to that point where we have to furlough people?
You know, Commissioner, it it want, we want that as the last resort. If, I have to honestly say there certainly is a possibility because there's just so much uncertainty. How prolonged this event is and how significant the future impacts are may require that. But typically, and as we presented to you months ago, when we talked about how do we plan for an emergency? Typically, that's one of our areas of last resort is having to impact the day to day personal budget of our staff. With with reductions in workforce being the last course of action.
Right, as a, as a last resort, where we have options before we get to that point.
We will, we will have every one of those options available for you and we'll present those to you, sir.
I appreciate that. Hold on to the money.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
And and I'd like to, and who I didn't thank.
We need to reiterate, anytime people hear furlough, you know, it's, it's really difficult on people. So I just want to make sure that we established the commissioner's court and all of us, you know, we established that be our last resort. We looked at everything from revenues to other opportunities and whatever we could do to before we get to that point. So I think sometimes people just pick up the word furlough and they'll forget about the other part of the conversation. So just to want to reiterate that we made a commitment to to do everything we can before we get to that point.
Certainly. There's no further questions. I'll take the opportunity to lead into the human resource portion of this presentation. And also like to send out a heartfelt thanks to Ms. Carrillo and her human resource team for all the assistance they provide us with. Managing this budget and projecting future needs of the county. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Melissa Carrillo.
Thank you, Wally. Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners, Melissa Carrillo with Human Resources. This afternoon, my team and I just have a few slides that we'd like to present to you as a continuation of the budget preparation for FY 21. And to help me present on the next few slides, I have members of my team that are going to be online sharing that information with you. So I'd like to turn the first portion of the presentation over to Ms. Valeria Fernandez, one of our HR managers.
You're muted?
Yes. Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners, Valeria Fernandez with the HR Department. I will be presenting to you regarding positions that have been placed under the general administration account. And positions that were a result of a specialty request. The general admin, the general admin or GADMAN account, next slide, please. The general admin or GADMAN account is one that is under the court's control. Positions have been placed here pending analysis. While we are not ready to make a recommendation to you at this time, we want to let you know what is happening and what to expect. Last year, you placed one court clerk intermediate position under the Justice of the Peace Precinct Number One's office. We are conducting an analysis of this position and will make, will be banking a recommendation during budget hearings. For fiscal year 21 as to where the position should be placed permanently. Last year, you placed six juvenile case manager positions in the GADMAN account. The juvenile case managers are assigned to six of the Justice of the Peace precinct offices. As you may know, this is something that we've been working on for a few years. In 2015, there was an update to Texas statute, which changed the way that juvenile juancy cases are handled. While the statute update didn't change the workload, it did shift where the workload originates. We will continue to work with the justices of the peace and with the district attorney's office to continue our analysis in the next few months. So that we, we may be, we may bring back a strong recommendation on what to do with these positions. For the specialty request, in fiscal year 2017, the court authorized five court clerks. To work in the district clerk's office for a judicial transparency project. The intent of this project is to clean up information that was found to be incorrect. After the county transitioned from the previous legacy system gyms to the current criminal justice system odyssey. The funding for these positions was extended until the end of fiscal year 2020. And in verifying with the district clerk's office, the clerks are on schedule to complete this project by the end of this fiscal year. As this project nears its completion, HR will work with the district clerk's office to transition those employees currently assigned to this project. The last item on this slide are the five administrative specialists intermediate positions that were placed. Within five constables offices at the beginning of calendar year 2020. The constables offices are responding to the quarterly staffing justification forms. While some of the data received thus far from them has been positive. Because of COVID-19, there were some impacts to training and operations and the data will need further analysis. We will be bringing more information to you during budget hearings. Unless there are any questions, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Natalia Chaparro.
Thank you, Valeria. Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners, Natalia Chaparro with Human Resources. If you can turn to the next slide, please, Alexis. Thank you. For the past several years, we have been providing data to the court pertaining to the jail average daily population and the staffing levels. Our office has worked closely with the sheriff's office to monitor the staffing levels and ADP to ensure that we continue to staff our jails adequately. So the slide before you provides a snapshot of the ADP as well as staffing in the downtown detention facility and the annex. So the first section of the staffing includes the positions in the, includes the positions in these calculations. Which are those are responsible staff for staffing the jails. These are the detention officers, the detention sergeants and the floor control officers. As you can see, from fiscal year 19 to current fiscal year FY 20, there is a decrease in the ADP, which correlates to the decrease in staffing. Now, due to the COVID pandemic, we are seeing a decrease in the average daily population for the months of April and May. And as a result, the sheriff has agreed to freeze 12 positions and I know it's indicated at the bottom of the slide. So our goal today is to provide a highlight to the court on this item. We will continue partnering with the sheriff's office to closely monitor the circumstances. And as always, ensure the jails are staff appropriately. So unless there are any questions from the court, I will turn the presentation. So unless there are any questions from the court, I will turn the presentation over to Michelle Cochrane, our deputy HR officer.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners, Michelle Cochrane with the HR department. You'll see on your screen this afternoon, our accountability policy update. The accountability policy and the subsequent procedure is an-
Sorry, Michelle, I wanted him to advance the slide. Thank you, Alexis.
Thank you, Melissa. I'll wait for that to come up. The accountability policy and the subsequent procedure is an assurance to abide with both HR and legal recommendations when handling employment matters that may result in a liability to the county. Each year, the HR department sends out a notice biannually on this policy to remind everyone of its existence. When a policy violation or truly a potential liability is identified by HR and assessed by legal, the procedure you see on your screen ensues. Thereafter, the court has the ability to take action they may deem necessary as a result of the liability. This procedure includes a briefing to the court and direction in an executive session meeting, a notice that is sent by our chief administrator to the elected official, and a committee meeting, which is inclusive of two members of the court, the elected official, our chief administrator, and our county attorney. Any violations that take place in a given year shall be reviewed during budget meetings, as we're doing today, in the event that a budget change needs to take place. Later today, as part of these meetings, the county attorney's office will be sharing potential and pending litigation and the application to the accountability policy for this fiscal year. Unless there are any questions, I will be turning the presentation back over to Melissa.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Valeria. Thank you, Natalia. Judge, Commissioners, just a few slides that we wanted to share with you as we continue prepping for budget hearings that are coming in FY21. And this honestly is just a real summary of some of the court actions that were taken a year ago and what we wanted to bring back to make sure the court understood what has happened since. So at this time, I will turn it over to any questions regarding this information, should you have any.
Thank you all. Great presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, Commissioners, if there's no questions, this will conclude our item, and this is a- Sorry, go ahead.
So I apologize, I couldn't get the mute off for some reason. And no, but I just want to thank you and for the presentation. Great job, you and your team. As always, Melissa and your team do an amazing job, very consistent, and thank you. So I apologize, trying to get that mute button, I couldn't for some reason. And so, Betsy, go ahead.
Yes, sir. This item is just to keep us all updated and get us prepared for the upcoming budget hearings. So we don't need any action, I believe, on this item. We just wanted to present the information and receive any feedback from the court as we prepare for fiscal year 2021.
No, thank you. Betsy, thank you for these presentations. I said earlier that it gets us ready, you know, it just sort of gives us a big picture, trying to get us to understand all the moving parts of the budget process. So I thank you for how efficient and effective the presentations are very, you know, they're succinct and, but very, very informative. So thank you for that continuing to keep us abreast as we move towards budget decisions.
It's our pleasure, Judge. Thank you.
Okay, Caesar.
Item number nine is discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Judge, Commissioner, we put this item on every single agenda in case any issue comes up that we will need to brief you on. At this time, we don't have any updates. The next update will be Monday, and we'll be ready to discuss items at that time. So for this item, we would have no action.
Item number nine, no action. So this brings us to our addendums, and our addendums are for executive session. At this time, Commissioner's Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 10 and 11. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
Hi, this is County Judge Sanmaniego. The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food, and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Bettes for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner Carl Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 census. Together and fearless we come.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotio Warehouse, located at 191 Canotio Avenue in Canotio, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioner's Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 2020 census count is incredibly important for El Paso. It helps our school, healthcare, food and housing programs get the money they need.
This is County Commissioner Vince Betas for Precinct 3. With your participation, the programs that support affordable housing, public education, and affordable healthcare can receive the funding they deserve.
This is Commissioner Callie L. Robinson, Precinct 4. Without you, these programs could not be successful.
This is Commissioner David Stout. Participate online, by phone, or by mail. Everyone in El Paso County must be counted, even children and babies. Your responses are safe and required by law to be kept confidential.
Hi, this is Commissioner Carlos Leon from Precinct 1. Let's come together and fill out those 2020 censuses. Together and fearless we come.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabians Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabians Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lee, El Paso, Texas, 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barril started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
Commissioners' Court has reconvened into special open session. Judge, this completes all the items on today's agenda.
Thank you, just want to thank Betsy and her team and the presentations. I mean, they're really good, they're getting so much better, we're getting the succinct information, and we're getting a lot of things done in a short period of time, and so I thank you for that. I want to thank everyone for participating and all the support we get from IT and everyone else, and Lexis and Miguel and Caesar and everybody. So, thank you very much, I hope you have an incredible Juneteenth Day tomorrow, celebrate. I know some people are ignoring that we have a Juneteenth, because they keep booking me or scheduling me for tomorrow, and so I wish it was more, it was broader in our community. I think it's a really special holiday, and I'm glad the county is enjoying that, so enjoy that day and enjoy the weekend. Thank you, everybody, and look forward to our Monday meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, it was a great weekend.
This concludes today's meeting at 2:42 PM. This concludes today's meeting at 2:42 PM.